November 30th, Mayor and Council Meeting, and I will go ahead and lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I've had a request to remove item number one, item number six, seven, and eight. Do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda? Motion by Councilmember Judy. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Hall. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Next, I'm going to move to the mayor's report, and I'll go back to those items in order as soon as I address the following. We've got a proclamation for Giving Tuesday. Whereas Giving Tuesday, a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism promotes the idea of a nationwide day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving. And whereas this observance follows the widely recognized Shopping Days of Black Friday, Small Business Saturday, and Cyber Monday, and encourages people to contribute in some meaningful way to their favorite charitable causes and organizations. And whereas the one-day total amount of monetary donations given by individuals and organizations in 2019 exceeded $511 million, according to a report by GivingTuesday.org. This was in addition to countless volunteer hours, in-kind donations, and countless acts of kindness. And whereas it is estimated that one-third of each year's charitable gifts are given in or near December, Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout the holiday season. And whereas the City of Roswell celebrates all citizens who choose to work together in the spirit of helping others. This Giving Tuesday serves as a reminder to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build a stronger community, and think of others' needs. And whereas the City of Roswell partnered with our local nonprofits in 2019 to share 23 posts on Facebook for a total each of 51,050 persons. And we encourage all citizens and staff to like, comment, and share our 2020 Giving Tuesday posts. And whereas we recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service throughout Roswell and all of North Fulton, and encourage all residents to support our nonprofit partners on Giving Tuesday and throughout the year. Now therefore, I, Laura Henry, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Roswell, Georgia, do hereby proclaim December 1st, 2020, as "Give Well, Roswell for Giving Tuesday", and call upon all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. And I encourage all of our Roswell residents to please participate in that. We've got such a giving community here in Roswell. I always want to lead the pack in what we're doing throughout our community as far as our charitable contributions and our volunteerism. So thank you very much. The next item under the mayor's report is the recognition of the City of Roswell receiving the Digital Cities Award from the Center for Digital Government, CDG. Harpreet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everybody. So this is an award that the City of Roswell applied for, for the first time, and we won it this year in the population category of 75,225,000. And Roswell is the only city in Georgia that has won this award in 2020. The Center for Digital Government Survey basically identifies and promotes best and emerging practices in the public sector IT community. And the CDG recommends cities using technology to better serve citizens despite new challenges triggered by the pandemic. So, and I've had help in completing this application from staff in other departments as well. Initially, we were applying for this award due to the completion of the city's first-ever interactive budget book for fiscal year 2021. But then we had staff from other departments contribute towards completing this application. And a big thank you to all of them, without whom this award would not have been possible.
Thank you, Harpreet. I would also like to thank our Admin Finance Department for earning this award. Once again, you are making us shine, and we certainly do appreciate it. So I would like to hear it for our Finance Department. Thank you. Back to the consent agenda. The first item is number one, approval of the November 9, 2020 Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes. It was requested to be pulled by Councilmember Zapata. Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, item number one, approval of the November 9, 2020 Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes. So my question is, I noticed last week, when I print copy of the the minutes, that the item number, let me see here. Item number two, red. Let me see here, red. Remove. Remove Councilmember Palermo. And then on today's agenda, I noticed a "please note", which I don't know how of the legal term it is compared with when, you know, when we cast a vote, will be in favor, opposed, abstained, absent, or removed. But the "please note" is a bit confusing for me. So I would like to know first who, you know, why this was changed from "remove" to this "please note", point number one, point number two, who took the initiative to remove from "remove" to "please note" as a way to describe how a vote was or was not cast. This is to start. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Zapata. I will say, and I'll let Mr. Davidson take over for this. I did, when I read the minutes, when Marley sent them out, I did challenge that because I did not remove Councilmember Palermo from the meeting. I muted his mic. He removed himself from the meeting. I'm not sure how the original notation got in there, but I did challenge that, and it was legal agreed with me that I did not remove him. So, Mr. Davidson, I'll let you take this over.
So, you know, we have always tried to be accurate with our minutes. What is in there now more accurately reflects exactly what happened. As everybody saw on the video or in person, Councilmember Palermo, his feed froze at some point after he was muted by the mayor. Mayor went ahead with the vote, and the vote was held. And Councilmember Palermo was unable, or did not take part in that vote. So we didn't want to say that he excused himself. So we just put exactly what happened. His feed froze, and the vote proceeded without him. So in order to be clear and concise with what actually happened at the meeting, we put that in there. He wasn't absent. He wasn't considered absent. He wasn't removed from the meeting. It was a technical glitch, and the vote proceeded without him.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a suggestion as far as the wording that it read more accurately. This is, in my opinion, and those that are in our offices right around here probably observe the same. The mayor muted Councilmember Palermo during the Zoom meeting. While muted, Councilmember Palermo's feed froze prior to Roswell IT restoring or resolving Councilmember Palermo's connectivity or for his ability to participate in the vote or giving the opportunity to arrive downstairs for the vote. Something that is, I think that gives a little bit more information if there's going to be an informational item in there.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Additional comments from council? Councilmembers Zapata.
So, well, I mean, it's great that we receive a Digital City Award. And that is really good, and congratulations. But here was a perfect example of failure of the Zoom meeting. And actually, happened to be during the open mic. Residents point out to this as well for a different situation. So, you know, you know, my interpretation is if someone is muted, the image is frizzed. So there is not interaction at all between an electoral official and the meeting. Then, that was obvious. Everybody knew that. So then not letting any electoral official to cast a vote, for me, is considered to be removed from the meeting. I mean, it's very simple. Mute, frizzed image, no resolved technical issue, call for a vote, cast a vote, and leave one of us council members without the chance to cast a vote. So for me, that is an action of removing someone, intentional or unintentional. I don't know about that, but the fact is that these electoral officials couldn't cast a vote. So we can use "please note" anything, but the change of actions or what happened led me to think about and believe that this was an act of removal of one electoral official. So we definitely need to fix our digital technology so this ever, ever, ever happen again. And clarify here, because "please note", like I said, is not in favor, is not opposed, is not abstained, is not absent, and is not removed. So what is that? Please note, I would like the legal department to explain the legal term of "please note", and then continue with an explanation. Thank you.
Councilmember Zapata, I would like to interject that I muted you as well, and you had the ability to vote. When I say Councilmember Palermo removed himself from the meeting, he was muted. He picked up his computer. He came bounding down the stairwell steps. That's about the time his video froze. So what I would say to you is he removed himself from the meeting. You were muted as well, and you stayed in your seat, and you could vote. That's the major difference here. Mr. Davidson.
So we watched the video, I don't know how many times. What we put in here is what we thought. It's up to this council to approve the minutes. If, you know, if y'all want to argue over why it happened or how it happened, that's up to y'all. But this is us being unbiased and just saying, this is what happened from what we saw. The details, you know, y'all could go into more details if you want, but these are minutes from the meeting. So this accurately reflects what happened during the meeting. If there's something that's inaccurate, then I would recommend changing it. But this is what happened in the meeting. But y'all can go into more detail if you feel like you need to.
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you. So I'm not really too focused on the exact description. I agree with Councilman Zapata's points. I hear him. And at the same time, I completely agree with and support Councilmember Hall's preferences of just a more clear description. And even Mr. Davidson, when I say from your legal perspective, I feel the way you've described it really aligns. Again, I felt Councilmember Hall's description is more clear. But that being said, the way you've described it, I think it does align certainly with how I remember it. I will state there, I definitely heard an inaccuracy here, which we could definitely go to the video and show is not the case, which is, it was just said that basically because I was heading downstairs, it froze up, and because, you know, downstairs, that's where it happened, et cetera. And that's not accurate. So basically, it froze up in here, and I rushed downstairs to really place a vote, and frankly, was shocked to, basically, as I got down there, as I was basically in view of the room, is when I heard Councilman Zapata's vote being counted, his vote in opposition. And so that's when I learned that actually I was not given the right to vote, which, again, was surprising since we were all given direction to all be in City Hall. So we were all here in person, which, again, is not clear there either.
Councilmembers Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. And, yeah, I would like to make a clarification because I was never, my image was never frizzed. So it's a huge difference between being mute, which I didn't know, but I guess I was mute, and the image being frizzed, where no interaction at all could happen. This was clear for everybody to see that one of the council members, the image was frizzed, and it was zero interaction between mute and an image. It was impossible to have any interaction. So that was the difference between my case, that was described a few minutes ago, and, you know, what happened with Councilmember Palermo's case. So it's slightly different because my image was never frizzed. I was able to see, and they were able to see me when I cast my vote in opposition. So that is a difference. It's not the same case. So, but well, I would like to know how can we make it this clear for the record before we vote in these minutes? So I'm willing to, I mean, I would like to hear more comments.
Councilmember Judy.
We're 15 minutes into this discussion now. There's a video that shows exactly what happened. The words really aren't going to matter because if anybody really cares, they're going to go watch the video. That's true transparency in a video. So let's figure this out and get on with the work of the people rather than talk semantics here.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. I would make a motion to just edit the language as I've read it. The mayor muted Councilmember Palermo during the Zoom meeting. While muted, Councilmember Palermo's feed froze prior to either Roswell IT restoring or resolving the feed and Councilmember Palermo's connectivity. He did not have the ability to participate in the vote.
Is there a second? Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, well, I mean, let me tell, voting on the minutes is one of the most legal responsibilities that we have here. So it's not like just move on and let's watch something else. And that is illegal. That is the most legal thing that you can have, the minutes approved by the council with all the votes, the vote cast on every single item. So I don't take light the minutes and approving the minutes at all. So I just want to remind that it's one of the most legal documents at City Hall.
Councilmember Judy.
It's always good to get legal lessons from other council members that don't have law degrees. But at the end of the day, let's get this over with and move on. I second the motion. Let's go.
Councilmember Willsey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for this conversation. I would just like to point out, I, if the narrative that's here is what was observed happening on the video, I think that's the narrative I would go with. I think if you ask the 12 or 13 people who were physically here and saw and observed what happened, they would have a slightly different story. So I guess, you know, from that standpoint, I'd like to be able to describe exactly what happened on the video. Another potential way to handle it is just to simply say the way we often do. If someone has to get up and be excused to take a phone call or go to the restroom or something, it's just absent for vote. That way, it's, you know, it's handled in a manner that might be acceptable to everyone without having to have to review 12 different accounts of what happened.
We've got a motion and a second. Any clarifying questions? All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it's Hall, Zapata, Judy, Palermo, and Tizer. All those opposed? And Councilmember Willsey, what's your pleasure?
I will abstain from the vote. I voiced my opinion. But if the council agrees with us, that is fine with me for the record.
Thank you. Councilmember Zapata, let's move on to item number six.
Thank you, Mayor. So item number six, approval of a resolution to allocate all Round 1, 2020, CDBG/CV funds, and approval of a budget amendment BA 22557010113020 in the amount of $296,302. An earmarked partial Round 3, 2020, CDBG funds in the amount of $3,248.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So here, my point is, you know, my criteria is to fund first those organizations who serve exclusively 100% Roswell residents. And then my second criteria is going down the line is to give it to those organizations who serve 100% of Roswell residents but doesn't have the opportunity, like in this case, to receive funds directly from Fulton County. So that said, I would like to propose that we do fund 100% of the required amount from Roswell Housing Authority of $75,000.
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you. So as we discussed in committee on this item, you know, all of the organizations that requested this grant funding, this funding, incredible organizations. The amount they do for the community and just to help others is inspirational. And so really fortunate to have so many great organizations that are asking for this money. And with it also, some information that we've learned from Mr. Alfred and saw on the email, I think actually one of the emails even came, I believe, this afternoon or evening, is seeing that many, many of these great organizations received large amounts from Fulton County. And the reason they did is because they are servicing, you know, you know, a lot of people throughout Fulton County, more than just Roswell. And then we have the Roswell Housing Authority. It's an organization that's really working with Roswell's lowest-income individuals and really, you know, just providing a lot of support. In addition to the housing, of course, looking for other career-type support, et cetera. And because they only support Roswell residents, they were not eligible for this money that Fulton County had received. And so I feel, it seems to me, like Roswell Housing Authority is being punished because they're really having just their focus on Roswell, on purely Roswell residents. And I feel, knowing that they did not receive the large money, amount of money from Fulton County that the others did, I do believe we should increase their funding to their fully funded $75,000. This does not mean that another organization does not get any money for these funds that we received. It means there's still funding that goes around to all these different groups. But again, the fact that we're not fully funding the group that's 100% focused on Roswell residents, and we're really then, you know, punishing them for just supporting Roswell residents, I feel we really need to be helping this, the people that live within Roswell Housing Authority and for this just great support there. So for that reason, I do agree with making an adjustment to this.
And might I ask Councilmember Zapata and Councilmember Palermo, where do you propose taking the money from to fully fund the Housing Authority? Councilmember Zapata.
So what I'm proposing also is because Roswell Recreation and Parks Department, local department also, I would like to find 100% of their request. So I believe if my math is correct here, so we have the Child Development Academy, $46,752. Home Stretch, $100,000. Roswell Housing Authority, $75,000. Roswell Recreation and Parks Department Adult Recreation Center Equipment and Program, $28,550. And Roswell Recreation and Parks Department Adopted Friendship Camp Equipment and Programming, $46,000, which I believe, if I did the right math, is going to $296,302.
So just to clarify a question, please. So you're proposing that we do not fund the Child Development Academy and that we do not fund the North Fulton Community Charities charter?
No, my, sorry, my first line was Child Development Academy, $46,752 even. $46,752. So then the one that is doing a great job but receive a great amount of money directly from Fulton County is the North Fulton Community Charities. This is the one that I would like to leave for the second round of funds that we're going to allocate very shortly. But they did receive a quite amount of money directly from Fulton County. So I would like to leave their request for the next round of funds.
Okay, thank you. So let me just go over this one more time, just to make sure I've got it straight. Child Development Academy is $46,752. A Home Stretch, Child Care and Tutoring is $100,000. North Fulton Charities, $0. Housing Authority, $75. Wrenken Parks, $28,550. And Wrenken Parks, $46. Correct?
Correct. That is my proposal.
Okay. Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you. There's a portion of Councilman Zapata's portion that I do strongly support, which is, again, Roswell Housing Authority for the exact reasons I've mentioned, as well as those Wrenken Parks initiatives that really are supporting a large focus on Roswell residents and the many people that need it. Where I don't fully agree on is based on where some of that money can come from. I think there's two different ways to look at it, and I'm certainly supportive of whatever this council would prefer. One way to look at it is basically we go off of actually staff scoring. And it was actually something that Councilmember Willsey had actually somewhat talked to, of the fact of looking at the fact that you had, from a scoring standpoint, from staff, you had the high score being the 44.5, which was a Roswell Rec initiative. And then that ended up having the CDA, the Home Stretch, the Roswell Housing Authority, as well as Roswell Recreation. So that's one aspect. Another aspect is Home Stretch is getting the largest amount of money. They are getting $100,000. So I guess a question I'd have for council, does it seem more equitable to slightly reduce that and then still give a... and then still give a portion to North Fulton Community Charities despite the lower staff score? But I think there's another relevant piece that I think has to be discussed, which is that email from Mr. Alfred. So if we look at from Fulton County, and we're actually looking at any funding through the CARES Act. And so if we look, Roswell Housing Authority receives zero. So they did not receive any CARES Act funds and frankly weren't eligible for others because, again, their focus is on Roswell. The CDA received 200,000. Homestretch received 289,400. And North Fulton Community Charities received 929,000. And I'm glad they did. You know, I'm really glad these great organizations did receive these amounts of money. They deserve it. They're great causes, just as I'm proud of the opportunity for Roswell to, at a minimum, partially fund, if not fully fund, some of these exact requests. But I think there's a couple of different ways to do it. But again, I think we need to look at it in equitable way to make sure that we are really supporting Roswell's most needy and our great organizations.
Councilmember Willsey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mike and Marcella, for bringing this here. I just wanted to say from what I know of the charities, North Fulton Community Charities works very closely with all of these organizations and works very closely with some of the residents at RHA as well in providing support for health, support in food and education and training. You know, there's a lot of interactivity, helping each other and helping residents there. You do get help from these other organizations. I guess I'm a little concerned that we are talking about reallocating money now when it was my understanding that we spent, you know, several weeks going over the different applications and scoring them and spent a work session coming up with a way to fund them. And I thought the conclusion for that was that we would fund 100% of all the asked and all the projects. I think all of the projects were very different. And again, there is some overlap in, you know, in how the projects would help each other. So I guess I'm just kind of concerned that, you know, why we're trying to reallocate these money here when we decided in the work session committee to fund them 100%.
Councilmember Judy.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Willsey. I was a bit confused there. I thought I was having a mind blank with what was going on. I think we did decide to fund them 100%. I guess is the issue here, who gets funded first and who gets funded in the second round? Because if that's the case, then I can understand why we would do it. I just want to make sure we're going to fund all these 100% through the second round where all these requests are funded.
Councilmember Palermo.
Yes, so my goal and hope is certainly to fund all of these. It is just knowing, frankly, that we got new information that we didn't have in those committee discussions. I wish we had had that information. I certainly would have had a different position on really the timing and which ones I felt, with my one single vote, on what should be funded in this first round. And given the fact that these three other organizations have all had hundreds of, received hundreds of thousands of dollars of CARES money, and knowing that Roswell Housing Authority is not fully funded for the first round and they have received zero, that's what's different. Again, if we had received this email sooner, if we had had this discussion and this information at committee, I think we probably would have all had that discussion. But I think, you know, if we get information today, even if we get it last minute, I think we do have to factor that into our decision on the timing.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, you know, critical information just came in. We discussed this lightly without firm information, and I think one of the council members suggested that the Roswell Housing Authority did receive money from Fulton County, which was not the case after we talked to them or after our department talked to them. So this came out later on after the meeting, unfortunately, but, you know, it's the reality. So then another idea that I can put on the table here is to fund 100% of Roswell Housing Authority, 100% of Roswell Rec, one and two, the two requests that they have, and then split the different 146,752 divided by three organizations, which give you 48,917 with 33 cents for each of the three, which is the CDA, Homestretch, and North Fulton Community Charities. This is the other. And then when the second round comes, we fully fund these organizations who receive now partial funding. It's another proposal that I'm putting on the table here. If you feel like everybody should receive something, the one that they already receive money directly from Fulton County. So this is another option that I would like to put on the table.
One thing, I hate to even say this, but one thing I do think we need to consider with the CDA, and it's stated here that, well, founded in Roswell over 50 years ago, they do not support Roswell residents exclusively, but do have a significant number of children from low-income families that live in Roswell, as well as many who work in Roswell. So these are folks that rely on the CDA for the care of their children so they can work in Roswell. And I would say the vast majority of these folks live in Roswell. So I'm not sure why we're picking and choosing and excluding some that are really Roswell-centric and not others. So Councilmember Palermo.
Yeah, Mayor, I agree with pointing that detail out. And my preference is in this first round to to give that larger, that large share to the CDA. Again, it really is, I feel what we're discussing is really timing. What we're discussing is not funding, but more purely around the timing. But definitely some great points on the great things that the CDA does. So again, I'm going to bring back kind of where my position is, which I don't want to punish the programs that are so focused on Roswell residents and that weren't eligible for Fulton County or other funding. And so that's why I do feel in this first round that it is important for Roswell Housing Authority as well as for the Adaptive Friendship Camp and the Wreck Center items, but then there's certainly still money for this first round with the CDA and as well as some going to Homestretch and/or North Fulton Community Charities.
Let me ask this question. I think we're back to square one, and we could have approved this on the consent agenda. If it's just about timing, the second portion comes through and it'll be funded 100%? Isn't that what you just said, Councilmember Palermo? This is all about timing, not funding?
It's about timing. However, I think where there's disagreement is really who should get that first round and how much.
Councilmember Judy.
This question is for Charles. Charles, when would that second round come through?
We currently have access to the funds now. We just have to decide how we're going to allocate those.
Okay, so basically, I would be up for just going ahead and allocating it all since we have access to the funds now and just pay everybody 100% with this motion tonight and be done with it.
Councilmember Hall.
Resolution was, yeah.
Councilmember Hall. You're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, battery must be going in my mouse. For the second round, Charles, by law, do we have to go out and procure the bids like we did the first time? Or we just simply get to allocate?
No, we chose to do the application process, sort of patterning it off of our traditional CDBG program. But there's nothing that says that we have to do that for the second round, so we can allocate the funds as we'd like.
So we have 103 that we've earmarked, and that leaves, how many, what does that leave out of the second round?
It'd be about 390,000.
So what are we going to do about the 390? How are we going to go about that?
I was trying to get this squared away first. It kind of overlapped. We got the notification of the second amount of funding while we're in the process of this, so I was hoping to get this squared away and then address that at another meeting, just so we weren't compounding so many different funding sources together.
Thank you.
Councilmember Willsey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Christine and Charles. I would agree or just propose that we go ahead and fund the 100% using some of the third round funds and then address the additional 390,000 separately, if there's a way to amend this resolution and just move forward so that we can help our nonprofit organizations to do the important work that they need to do.
Councilmember Judy.
So I'm going to make a motion, if possible, to to fund 100% out of the second and third round funding, and then we will go through the process with the remainder of the third round funding.
Councilmember Palermo.
And I might be seconding that, but I want clarification first. So to be clear, in this round that we came to tonight, we had 296,302, and we had requests of 399,550 that were eligible. And so therefore, we're approximately, let's just say, 105,000 short. And so therefore, we've got 390 in the next round. So basically, what we're saying is we're going to use approximately 105,000 from that to be included in here. And then we're going to have approximately 285,000, which we'll go through this process again with the applications and all that. If that's accurate, I second it.
Your motion to second was changing the resolution, modifying the resolution, correct?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Alfred.
Just to clarify, the second round of funding, what they're calling round three from HUD, we have 496,000. So it'd be 496 minus the 103 that we potentially could allocate tonight for the project balances.
That's my motion.
And I second it, knowing the remaining balance, we're still going to go through a process of allowing applications and all of that with that remaining amount.
Mr. Alfred, let me ask you a question. Do we go out for additional applications? Or is it pulled from the application pool that didn't make it in this?
Right now, we received eight applications, eight proposals through this process. Two of those were deemed ineligible, so I don't think we would have eligible projects to pick from solely off of that.
Thank you. So we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item is item number seven. Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven, approval of a resolution establishing a one-time tax credit for existing businesses paying 2021 occupation tax.
Yes, Councilmember Zapata.
So, yeah, the point here is there's no distinction between profitable, doing very well businesses versus low profit and not doing very well businesses given the COVID situation this year. So my point here is that unfortunately, this this initiative that don't contemplate or that not make a difference between profitable and successful businesses this year versus less profitable and less successful businesses this year. So we are giving everybody, even if you're profitable and doing very well this year, that we give you this benefit as well. That is my point.
Councilmember Judy.
Yeah, I don't think we can do that, A. I think that's probably imposing different taxes upon businesses that I like a legal answer on that. And then B, it's been a tough year for everybody, and I don't think, just like a few weeks ago that I disagreed on the music, I don't think it's in my opinion or purview to decide who's successful and who's not successful. So I can't support that. I support this all wholeheartedly.
In my opinion, the tax credit should be across the board. That way, you're not having any kind of differentiation in the taxing authority. So you're just giving that tax credit to the businesses across the board.
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you. So I am planning on supporting this tonight because there are some smaller-margin businesses, lower-revenue businesses that do benefit from this, and I will be supporting. However, I do want to just state and really make clear that we do have the ability to do this based on profit margin. We do have the ability to do this based on revenue. And ultimately, what's happening is by these largest-profit-margin industries that are making millions of dollars, where, again, we do have that ability to separate, et cetera, by them getting such a large tax holiday continued, it does really have a negative impact on the services that Roswell is providing, both to residents as well as to the businesses, and had an impact on really, frankly, the taxes that we're taxing and needing to tax residents. So I'm opposed to this tax holiday continuing purely for the highest-margin, highest-revenue businesses, but ultimately, I will be voting in support tonight because I certainly know that there's a lot of smaller-margin businesses that any holiday they can get, we certainly want to help and support.
Councilmember Zapata.
Yeah, Mayor, whatever it is, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Zapata. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Palermo. Councilmember Judy, do you have a clarifying question?
What are we approving here? What we, he pulled? Or is he, are we approving the differentiation of small and big businesses and successful and non-successful businesses? I was confused.
No, the item that was pulled from consent, is that correct, Councilmember Zapata?
That is correct. Thank you, Mayor.
And that's what you seconded, Councilmember Palermo?
Yes.
All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. The last item that was pulled from the consent agenda is number eight. Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. Approval of a resolution to increase fees on services performed by the Police Records Department. There've been some questions from the residents, so I don't know if Chief can explain what was explained on committee meeting to the public that is following the mayor and council meeting.
Let me clarify, Councilmember Zapata, do you need additional information from the chief? Or do you need him to reiterate what he said in committee?
Yes, to reiterate. And then I guess might be, I don't know if there's any question from the public for this item tonight. I don't know that. I don't have this information.
We don't have anyone in queue for any of these items this evening. The only person we have in queue is during the budget process. Councilmember Palermo. You're unmuted.
Thank you. The entire council received an email on, I guess it was yesterday, and within the Georgia Sunshine laws, it mentions that public agencies may charge a reasonable fee for copies of public documents, but usually may not charge more than 10 cents per page. So that's just something, I don't know if that's for Chief Conroy or that's more for Mr. Davidson because it's a just really a Georgia or that's more for Mr. Davidson because it's a just really a Georgia sunshine law question on a copy charge.
Mr. Davidson.
So the state law provides certain like incident, accident reports, you can charge up to five dollars. I believe that's why they probably put the five dollars here on here. The open records is for, that's just ten cents a page that doesn't cover the cost of retrieval or anything like that. So where the state sets a higher fee, I think that's where the police department is proposing. And then an open records request would just go through the formal process and be charged accordingly.
Councilmember Palermo.
Now, Mr. David, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Davidson. So if the council approves this as proposed and as in the agenda tonight, if they're for any reason, either we learn something different in the next, hypothetically, the next two weeks, or this council changes their mind and wants to adjust the cost, is that something that's a quick process, can be changed at any time?
It's just a resolution. It'd just be a bring it back to council, change it.
Okay. In that case, I'll be supporting it as written tonight and always open to hearing from residents on any recommendations for updates.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So if we are ready, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmembers Zapata, do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Palermo. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Wow, we just finished the consent agenda and it's only eight-thirty.
Mayor Henry.
Yes. Councilmember Tizer.
I don't recall, did we vote on the rest of the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. Okay, Administration Finance Department, Councilmember Tizer, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. I have two items tonight. And as I read them, I would ask for you to give me a little bit of latitude to describe a process and some work that we've all been doing this afternoon and maybe even the last couple of days in hopes that we can come to a good agreement tonight.
Are you proposing this prior to the presentation from finance?
I would like to do that, yes. Just so that everyone has a framework of what we're looking at as a council.
Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you. So item, the two items, item number three is approval of the fiscal year 2021 budget amendment and approval of a resolution temporarily freezing certain approved capital project funds. The remainder of the budget amendment was deferred by action of the mayor and council from November ninth, 2020, and mayor and council meeting to the November thirtieth, 2020, mayor and council meeting. Item number four is alterations to the existing 2021 budget. I thank you for the latitude to explain some processes here. This has been a highly difficult year for budgeting, as we all know. It's also been a very difficult year to forecast where we are and where we might be. And so last meeting, we saw a forecast by our finance department, which gave us some idea of the amount of money that might be available should certain activities happen. And so we now find ourselves about to go through a discussion by our staff as to items that they are coming back for from first quarter. And we have second quarter and, excuse me, and strategy, final strategy session coming up very soon. And so we have about a six-week timeframe here. So the request is that as staff and any other organization that is presenting their budget information tonight goes through the process, if they could let us know of the items they're presenting, which ones are critical expenditures that can't wait until January twenty-third, at which time I suggest we make a motion and vote on each one of those. And why January twenty-third? The strategy meeting that we're going to be having is on January seventh. So we'll be completed with that process. And the mayor has agreed to hold a work session to go over where we are in the budget process, where we look like we're going to be by the end of the year, and ask staff to complete the project of, based on where we think we're going to end up, which items, how much of the things do we want to begin to do to benefit our citizens and keep our city moving forward? And so the ask here, as you go through, staff goes through their items, is let us know which critical expenditures there are that can't wait until that final meeting. Would also ask that the items formerly from number four would be just read. We're not going to, no need to discuss them as they'll come back up in the work session to come. And so I think that would put us on a path to come up with a very solid budget for the rest of the year. I think one of the other things that makes me think that that sort of six-week timeframe is important, you know, we are about to see a whole lot of things happen with vaccines, et cetera, even in just the next, the next short few weeks. And I think that's going to help us be a little more certain as to the amount of funds we would like to release from both operating and capital. And I think those decisions will become much clearer following our January seventh strategy meeting and certainly following just the next few weeks. And so that would be what I would recommend we do. I think many, we've tried to discuss that amongst the group throughout the day today. If I've misstated anything, you know, please feel free to correct me. So what I'm asking for is to combine items three and four, agree to the process today, and then to discuss any items that staff feels are critical expenditures that can't wait until potentially January twenty-third. Thank you.
Councilmember Tizer, I just want to clarify something because staff will be presenting a budget this evening that department heads and one partner organization will be stating their cases that while I do not have an objection to combining three and four, it does muddy the waters because we've got a staff-presented budget and then we've got budget amendments that are proposed by three members of the council. So I would prefer to keep that separate as far as the conversation goes because staff is going to be ready to address the budget that they're bringing forward this evening.
So I don't think in our discussions, there is a plan to vote on any of the items in number four, but to have them read into the record so that we don't forget about them as we go into the next group of meetings. And hopefully, I stated that correctly.
Okay, well, and I'll get to Councilmember Palermo in a second because I did not have that information about reading it into the record. And I wasn't sure if these three council members were going to ask for a vote tonight or what their intention is. So Councilmember Palermo.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor Henry, and thank you, Councilman Tizer, for walking through just a proposed process tonight. So I strongly believe that the amendments suggested in item number four do provide a great improvement to the budget for taxpayers. And it's something that I'm certainly ready to vote for tonight. However, I'm certainly, I've expressed, I'm certainly supportive of a deferral because the reason being, I think when you have a large amount of tax dollars being spent, it is something that should be covered in multiple meetings. So I'm completely comfortable with the deferral and will support that for the opportunity to get, for residents to get more awareness and to make sure we go through that through the full process. With that, I do think it is important that they are mentioned, whether in item number three or item number four. I think it is important that each item is mentioned as what's potentially being considered. And I'm hoping I can gain support from this mayor and council to support these amendments, to really make sure we have a budget very focused on taxpayers. But again, fully supportive of a deferral. My preference would be much sooner, my preference would be within two weeks. But given the holidays and other aspects, and I do want to ensure there is that full public comment period, I am supportive of January. I certainly would not be supportive out past January. And again, though, I just want to stress for, as we do go through those, these are all items that I truly feel are going to benefit taxpayers and I do feel are urgent. So I do feel they're important priorities that I would absolutely love to move forward with tonight. That being said, in the spirit of compromise, I'm certainly supportive of deferring them, knowing that although they're urgent priorities, the bigger goal is to get them passed. And if we can do that in January, I think it'll be a great win for taxpayers.
Thank you. I agree that in January, after we finish our strategic plan, that would be very appropriate. Our strategic plan will prioritize our wishes as a council and the wishes of the public. If we are good stewards of the public's opinion, we will represent their opinion. So January twenty-third, I think would be a great time to do it. We'd have the January seventh meeting under our belts. So what I would propose that we do is go through, let staff propose a budget. I will have department heads weigh in. I would encourage a robust conversation. We'll ask questions after each department head. And then I would be looking for a motion. So and then what we can do is go through item number four separately. And I do agree that, I personally need some clarification because many of these, I have no idea what the implications are of it. I don't know what the parameters are. So that's my preference to go about it that way. Does anyone have any objections to that? Councilmember Palermo.
No objection, just, yeah, and clearly, I think the way you laid it out makes sense. So I look forward to that robust discussion in number three. And then in the opportunity for item number four, to read those, to have anyone ask any questions or any opportunities for clarification. And if...
That's what I just said.
Right. And so with the intention of motioning to defer unless item three ends up being different, wanting to really move a budget forward tonight, which again, doesn't sound like is the case. So I appreciate it.
Okay, staff, are you ready to move forward with your presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. So before I get into the first quarter budget amendment, I would like to provide a brief background. So the first quarter budget amendments were presented to mayor and council during the October twenty-sixth work session and also at the November ninth council meeting. And at the October twenty-sixth work session, we had provided an economic update of the state and the nation as a whole. We had also provided an update on the revenues and expenditures, recommended adjustments to revenues and expenditures as of the first quarter and departmental budget requests as of first quarter. We had also reviewed the current approved capital projects and recommended which ones could continue to be frozen. And that list is included in your packets. Oh, sorry, I should be sharing my screen here. I apologize. I got too excited, I guess. Do you all see the presentation mode? No? There you go. All right. So the first quarter budget amendments were also presented, as I mentioned, and discussed at the council meeting on November ninth. We had included a full fiscal year estimate for the general fund during that presentation and provided a recap of recommendations presented at the October twenty-sixth work session with a more defined recommendation for employee compensation. At the November ninth council meeting, mayor and council had approved the one-time compensation recommendation for employees making less than hundred thousand. And the compensation for employees making more than hundred thousand was deferred to tonight's council meeting. And the action on all the other first quarter budget recommendations was also deferred on November ninth to tonight's council meeting. So tonight, I will provide a recap of the revenue and expenditure adjustments. Then the department heads will present their first quarter budget request and answer any questions that mayor and council may have. And then I will talk about some other policy considerations and the capital project freeze list. So starting with the revenue adjustments in the general fund, these were discussed at the last council meeting. So I will not go over them line by line, just to quickly recap. So property tax was, we are recommending reducing by six hundred thousand. The transfer in from the hotel motel fund to the general fund, we are recommending that be reduced by fifty thousand, and that is only for the first quarter. And the property tax amount that I mentioned, the reduction, that is for the entire fiscal year. And then we are proposing, we are recommending increasing the sales tax revenue by nine hundred thousand. And this again, is based on just the actuals for the first quarter. And the fourth item that we have here is the reduction to the loan proceeds. This is for the IT switch project, which came in below cost, below what we had expected. And those are the savings that you see there. So based on those four items, the total revenue increase that we anticipate for the first quarter is hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars. We also, we have also made some adjustments on the expenditure side. And this list of adjustments is the same as what was shown at the last council meeting. And so I will not go through each item. But if there are any questions about any adjustment, I will be happy to answer them at the end of the presentation. So just to give you a summary, the total expenditure savings that we are showing on this slide are a little over a million dollars. And based on the recommended adjustments to revenues and expenditures on the two prior slides, we have one million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars available for allocation for operating. We also made some adjustments on the capital side after reviewing all of the current approved capital projects. We have the savings from the IT switch project, which reduces the revenues and expenditures by hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-four, like I mentioned on the previous slide. In addition, we have a little over a million dollars that we are recommending allocating towards other projects. Now, this one million, eighty-eight thousand, eighty-three dollars that you see here, these are savings from projects that have been completed or those that have come in below the budget. And a complete list, as I had mentioned, is included in your packets and will also be shown on some later slides. With the adjustments to capital that we made, so we would have a little over a million dollars available for reallocation towards capital projects. So in this section, we have all the general fund budget requests that we've received from departments. Ma'am, would you like to call on the department heads to speak to their requests?
Yes, please.
So we have Administration Department first, Michael.
Thank you, Harpreet. I've got just a few items to talk about tonight. The first two that you see in operating and in capital are items that we certainly recommended from our department to be funded and originally were included as what we would consider to fund in the first quarter. The first one is the added funding for the maintenance of our security system. We're starting, we've run into a couple of outages now. The last outage had some door locking modules that we ended up... that we ended up having to put into a manual mode for some of our older circuit boards. This $10,000 would be something that we would spend relatively quickly to try to get our circuit boards updated to match the new server systems that we have so that we don't lose the operation of our doors. And we had to provide a lot of hard keys to go out. The other problem is when we lose these circuit boards, trying to put them back together, they're pretty old, they're hard to find the parts. And the circuit boards that we really need to work on also interface with our fire control panel. So this $10,000 is something that we're looking for to add into our budget and would be used relatively quickly. It's ready for the work to be done right now. The second item that we have is a capital item, and that's the, what we call the FCA, the Facilities Condition Assessment, the citywide facilities maintenance program. There's about 70 buildings that this program covers. We're asking, requesting the $464,283. I'll tell you that that is certainly not all of the program. The program for this year was originally a little over, was over $1 million. This $464,000 building operations, Chris Ennis particularly, has worked through the Facilities Condition Assessment program that we have. It's all the digital program. And the focus of these funds is basically exterior maintenance on buildings. We want to make sure, it's not cosmetic. We're not going in and doing, you know, refurbishing the painting and refurbishing the carpet, which is all part of the program, doing some of the bathroom facilities and things like that. But what we're focusing on is exterior painting, any windows that need the work, that need redone, doors that need redone, some roof repairs, although I don't think there's any roof replacements in here yet out of this funds. But we're focusing on maintaining, protecting our buildings and keeping our buildings going. And as soon as we can get this money approved, we can start working on that. If you remember, we did freeze this program. We basically finished up a couple of ongoing roof projects that we had last year. So those funds, the $464,000 are what we're focusing on as things that we really, this maintenance, we really don't need to defer at this point, but we need to move forward with that. So those are the two funded ones that we had funded in the, or we recommended funding to begin with. And then we have a few more on the next page that are some other projects that I believe that we need to have. I can't tell you the urgency on them. The first one is to add the community engagement program. Mayor and council, you are all aware of our continued efforts, your continued efforts to have good communication with our citizens. So for the request is to have one full-time community engagement coordinator and a part-time administrator for that person. It would be a branch of the community relations department, this or division. This particular office would be to expand our core community so that we can have that twice a year with the community coming in to learn about the city and what we do. These people would be able to help organize town hall meetings, public input meetings, coordinate civic training, education to the general population in the public about what we do as a local government. They would also manage community surveys to, we haven't done those in a few years, but when we've done them in the past, we've gotten really good information back from the community on kind of our performance measures as a city. And then also to create a city speakers bureau, to be able to go and speak to some of our local organizations, to some of our schools, to homeowner associations and have a speakers bureau set up. So we've requested this one in the budget in the past, and we still think that this office would be a very productive office for us. The next request is to increase funding for building operations maintenance of $20,000. This is just a right sizing of a budget. For the last several years, our maintenance budget has run low or run out. And we've actually funded some maintenance items out of building operations, out of other line items. The $20,000 increase to this line item would allow us to fund building maintenance out of the building maintenance line item and leave funding in the other line items for the appropriate projects and uses of those line items and not have to scramble to find the money. Certainly, our department has not gone over budget. We've always been able to find the money. I won't tell you that we can't find it again if we have to. But this would right-size that line item and allow building ops to be able to account for their funds appropriately. The third item under operating is to increase funding for the security part-time and overtime for events and meetings. I would respectfully request that we don't consider that one right now. After we've gone this far into the year, we have not had the elected official meetings that we tend to have where we might have security there. We don't have as many after-hour meetings. We don't have as many events. That $11,000 isn't something that I would suggest or recommend at this point that we move forward with after speaking with our security manager, our chief marshal on that. It's just something that we can wait on. As far as our capital items that have not yet been funded that we consider very important is the installation of the exterior cameras at the city hall complex. It's $14,800. We've got city employees, particularly our 911 communications employees. They park over here in the city hall parking lot. Their shifts are such that they get in when it's dark and they leave when it's dark. Of course, this time of year, we all pretty much do that anyway. It's dark when we get here, dark when we leave. We don't have any kind of exterior eyes or cameras on the outside of our complex. And we also are promoting our complex for citizens to park here, to be able to walk over to the historic district and the Canton Street. Cameras would just be a much-needed increase in our security and also helps to deter, you know, some activities that aren't, that aren't welcome on this campus because they know that there's cameras out there. So we have asked for the cameras in a larger scope in the past. This is just for the city hall complex, the $14,800. The last one we have for the capital is our security upgrades at Henbury for Public Works, the Public Works facility. That facility is, I believe, the only facility we have left that's not secured in an appropriate way. We have equipment that's parked outside. We have vehicles that's parked outside. We have no gate. We have no after-hours people out there. And we tend to get activity out there that's not welcome. We're looking for vehicular gates. We're looking for pedestrian gates, electronic, just like we have in other areas, to be able to secure that property. It's $62,000, but you know, every day we wait is another day that it's not secured. So we still ask for that funding on that particular program. The only one that's really not, as I said, was for the part-time staff right now, or part-time and overtime for our security. We can wait on that. And I'm glad to, well, I don't know, Harpreet, if we're going to answer any questions now, if we will wait till the end, I'll turn it back over to you.
What I would like to do is questions as we go along. So, yes, councilmember Tizer.
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Fisher, one of the things that struck me when we did the forecast through the end of the year was what it appeared to allow us to do potentially in the area of building maintenance. And so my question to you is, the other items that are, that were unfunded, you know, I certainly think that we should address when we do our review in January and certainly should come before us at the work session. But of the $464,283, if you were asked, again, the question that was asked from us all is, in light of, you know, what we've seen projection-wise, can this wait until January?
This $464,000 request?
Yes, sir, because I suspect that, I suspect that there might be more available. And if we told you that, your answers, you know, and what you would do the maintenance on might change.
Our maintenance for the entire year, given it being a normal year, would be about $1.2 million.
Right.
This $464 is, in my opinion, is something that we shouldn't negotiate on very long because this is exterior buildings. So I would be, I would request that we consider this one tonight so that we can get moving forward. Some of these require some bidding that has to go on before we can get it done. Some of it we can do with on-call and move forward with it. But the sooner we can get going on the exteriors, the better. And then I think we continue the conversation on January 23rd of what those other items still are in the Facilities Condition Assessment. But I do agree with you, there, we're still short quite a bit. We have about $290,000, $95,000 in capital that we're going to be talking about unfreezing in a little while, that we'll get to in a minute. But these are actual maintenance items that we really want to do to keep our buildings protected where they don't degrade anymore.
Additional comments, questions from council? Okay, your pictures are really little. So if I miss your hand being up, please wave or something. Okay, so let's go ahead and move on. Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you.
Next, we have a comdiv.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is Lenora Bromberg with Community Development. A first item that we have are two funded requests, they're operating requests. The first of these is a software hardware for digital plan review. This was previously presented to mayor and council at a value of about $39,000. This was to purchase workstations, which includes hardware and software, similar to what our fire marshal's office is using, that is specifically for doing plan reviews of very large and complicated projects as well as smaller projects. We've been doing some additional research and believe that we could actually reduce that request down to what you see on the screen tonight of the $2,945, which would allow us to just purchase the software and then do some upgrades to some of the monitors and be able to use the rest of the existing hardware that we already have in-house. It would not have the full functionality, but it would be a vast improvement over the situations that our plan reviewers are using now. As a reminder, with COVID-19, we did move to almost 100% digital submission of all of our permit applications for land disturbance, building permits, as well as our zoning applications. So all of our plan reviews are being done digitally on PDFs today. The second item is to add a full-time building plan reviewer position at 58% funding. Of course, this is a recurring position at $52,411. And just as a reminder, the building division, which is here in Community Development, does all the permit application intake, plan review and issuance as well as inspection and enforcement of those approved plans. In the first 40 weeks of this calendar year, we had almost 1,000 new applications that required building plan review. So this is not our land disturbance permits. This is not our one-day turnaround trade permits. These are ones that actually require full building plan review by the building plans examiner. Those plans should have probably taken him twice as long to review than they did because of working extra hours, doing some shorter turnaround on plan reviews. He hasn't been able to keep up with the workload. But based on our estimation of the amount of time we should be spending on these projects, we identified the need in the original budget for this full-time position and have asked for it to be included in the funded items. On the next slide are a couple of unfunded items. The first is probably the highest of priority out of the three of these for us, and that is the funding for codifying the EDC text amendments at $7,500. This is an item that we feel comfortable revisiting early in the calendar year of 2021. However, if this funding isn't made available, we are not able to codify any of the 20 text amendments that we've already done this calendar year. So just to let you know what that's for. The next two items aren't nearly as urgent for us. The first is a part-time code enforcement officer position at 58% funding. We are able to keep up with the workload at this time with our current staffing. And so we feel comfortable with this being delayed to a further discussion in the future. And the last item is a new lease vehicle for our engineering division at just over $8,000. Again, we're able to make do with borrowing and trading vehicles back and forth between staff right now as well as just taking advantage of our personal vehicles when we're up against a crunch. So we feel comfortable that that's one that we could also postpone and have a conversation about later. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Council have any questions? Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, mayor. So the item, full-time building plans reviewer position at 58% funding for $52,411, is this has any impact on improving customer service for those permits to redo your kitchen or your bathroom? So it doesn't take too long to get those permits and move forward with the projects? Or is it different position or will not affect this, this kind of reviewing, this kind of plans?
So it's yes and no. This is a position that would be able to review those smaller projects and get those out of the door a little bit faster. When we originally proposed this position, it was going to be a joint permit expediter, plan reviewer, and also be able to fill in on some inspections. This position could still do that. But right now, because of the way we're doing the online, our emailed in, there's not necessarily the same desire or demand for a lot of the expedited permits. But that's basically the way we would look at splitting this position up is that there would be the larger, more complicated projects by our current plan reviewer and the smaller ones that we want to do in a shorter timeframe than we typically do to be good, to go to this individual. Just as a point of reference, we typically turn our more complicated projects around in 10 business days from a plan review perspective for our building permits. That's actually for all of our applications. And then when there are resubitals or smaller projects, we tend to do them in five business days. Both of those numbers are probably about half of what most of our neighboring jurisdictions offer. So I do believe that this would offer a higher level of customer service because we will be able to review some of those smaller projects in a quicker timeframe instead of going to that two-week queue. But it's not necessarily something that we get a lot of complaints about when it comes to the thousands of applications that we get in on an annual basis.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Okay, thank you. We are on to fire.
Steve Toldy.
Come on, oh, hey, Ron. Good evening, mayor and council. The first item that we're bringing forward is funding for replacement of fire vehicle communication headsets, or $67,500. This equipment goes inside the cab of the fire truck. Each firefighter has a headset. That headset acts as communication with the 911 center. It acts as an intercom system so that they can talk to one another on the way to the call. And it also eliminates the loud noise of the siren, air horns and the engine, vehicle engine. We consider this a safety item. That's why we're bringing it forward and we consider it to be a critical, a critical need at this point. For the other items, we didn't feel that they rise to the level of critical, the full-time assistant fire marshal position. Like Community Development, we also see an increase in plan review. And this person would free up an additional person to do plan reviews in the office. Funding for lockers at headquarters and fire safety, public safety announcements. Or again, they're very important, but we didn't think they were critical. And then under the capital, the replacement of the, our John Deere gator that we use to transport patients from the parks, from the trails, it's in need to be replaced. Fire station number two land acquisition and lighting upgrades at the fire stations are, again, not to be considered critical. So we're not asking them right now. We're going to defer them to later.
Council have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Judy.
Chief Tony, uh, real quick on this, um, the current uh headphones in the fire vehicles, are they in need of repair? Are they just not there? Um, do we need, i- is that the reason it's critical right now, or we need more of them? Um, to uh to get this done tonight?
We have the heads headset systems in all the apparatus. Uh, this would only do the older apparatus. The older ones were uh the the systems were installed um in-house. Um, they're old systems that were along with the analog radio system. Uh, the new digital radio system is a little bit more um touchy with the not with the kind of wiring and the connections, and we're having a lot of failures right now. Uh, we've we've identified about seven vehicles that need replaced. And in addition, there are some other upgrades on other vehicles where they don't need a a complete overhaul. They just need some uh a different uh components to make them work better with the digital radio system.
Perfect, thank you.
Additional questions from council? I don't see any hands up. Uh, thank you. We'll move on to police.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, so there's a couple items here out of our operating a proposal that we're proposing to add funding for the replacement of our tourniquets and the holsters in the amount of fifteen thousand dollar. Uh, under capital, we have two items. Ballistic shields for our uniform patrol. Um, these ballistic shields would be issued to supervisors in the field and would be able to be quickly deployed in the event of an armed individual or an active shooter. And uh the long-distance weapons platform upgrade at twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars. This is for weapons optics for members of our SWAT team.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have any questions for the chief? I do not see any hands up. Let's move on to recreation parks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, we have a handful of items under the operating and capital category um that I'll be going through. Uh, the increased funding for janitorial services at our public facilities, if you recall from our original budget process, uh, we were originally requesting sixty thousand dollars to pilot a program that would switch to a nighttime janitorial service in our common areas at the Performing Arts Center. Um, we originally delayed that request because we were in the process of closing our facilities. Um, and we're unsure of what coronavirus was going to have in store for us for the coming months. Um, as we've experienced coronavirus, we we realize that we have a significant um shortage in our staffing to be able to continually clean our facilities during the operating hours in which we're open. Um, and this funding would be for a total of six facilities that we would add nighttime janitorial services um that would clean the common areas, essentially our restrooms, common areas, community rooms, and lobby areas. Um, as we move through the operating hours for six days a week, that would allow us to extend our existing um facility staff throughout the entire day. Currently, our facility staff come in roughly at four thirty-five o'clock in the morning, flip the buildings from the night before to be able to get them open in the morning and then clean throughout the morning. Um, roughly leaving around two or three o'clock in the afternoon, leaving kind of the remainder of the building operational hours um to the full-time staff that are there to kind of clean up and continue to wipe down buildings and facilities. Uh, this would allow us to take that, those facility staff members that normally leave at two or three o'clock and program them throughout the day to support our building operations and then bring a nighttime crew in, again, to flip those facilities. The six facilities include the Physi- Physical Activities Center, Adult Recreation Center, Adult Aquatic Center, East Roswell Recreation Center, Bill Johnson Community Activity Building, and the Hembry Park and Recreation Center. To move on for the holiday lighting, um, Councilmember Tizer requested um flagging any items uh that could be deferred until January. This is one of those items. When we originally proposed this, we were trying to replace the holiday tree. Those trees are already up um and being prepared for our holiday lighting on the fifth. Um, and so at this point in time, we will look to that uh request into next year um to try and tackle uh the replacement of those trees. We're able to get in another year out of the trees that we currently have. Um, I will flag this item and just kind of mark that the trees are getting fairly tired and it's about time to replace those. As we look at the funding for supplies to maintain maintain parks, trails, and equipment, this is a recurring expense where we continue to see the increased costs associated with our cleaning supplies, paper goods in particular, um, and a handful of other of our supplies associated with our ongoing operations. We had originally requested this item, again, not understanding exactly what COVID had in store for us. Uh, we pulled this item in the original budget process. Um, we really do believe that we're going to see an additional expense associated with our ongoing operations coming into the next six months. Um, alongside of our contract services, this is our elevator maintenance, pool filtration system, and mat maintenance. Um, this is an ongoing expense just associated with the cost associated doing business uh with our contractors, and we're seeing the increased costs um of those operations throughout the year. As it relates to our capital, um, and I'll have a couple of photos to share. The trails repairs, if you recall, we've been funding the ongoing repairs in various areas of Big Creek Park and the boardwalk of Big Creek Park. We continue to see um areas of that trail system that are degraded. We currently have an area of the trail that is closed down right now because of dry rot issues um due to flooding and other maintenance problems that we need to replace uh so that we can allow the community to access that space. Alongside of that, we have our ongoing light pole replacement program. Normally, Mayor and Council funds those two items throughout the year. They were deferred at the beginning of the year. This is the replacement of our wood and light pole systems um in our parks and facilities. We continue to monitor all of those light pole systems, and if we allow them to go too long, essentially the wooden poles will start to dry rot and are at risk of falling um in heavy storms or potentially just falling any given day. As we look at the Recreation Park and Maintenance Program, the eighty-eight thousand dollars, normally we request at the beginning of the year roughly three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for our ongoing maintenance of facilities throughout our park program. Um, this we've centered in on essentially four really strong health and safety items that we want to tackle uh within this program. Um, they include, and I'll just run through them really quick. All right, let me pull my notes. We have the Visual Arts Center in Roswell Area Park. Um, we're seeing some dry rot associated with the decking behind that. Um, and if we don't continue, if we don't actually repair that dry rot, we're at risk of potentially having to shut down that decking in the backside. Um, our impact associated with not doing that is we potentially can't move programming out onto that decking space in the outdoors when we have nice weather. Um, it's going to be hit and miss. Obviously, over the next few days, we wouldn't be doing outdoor program programming on a day like today, but when the sun's out, um, it's nice to be able to move programs outside and be able to use that space when it's available. We have skylight repairs at East Roswell Community Center. We have two skylights that have been damaged to storms. They're currently covered in plastic right now. Um, but heavy rains and winds will rip that skylight plastic covering off, and then we have the potential of giving getting water intrusion into those building spaces. And then we have the Roswell Area Park Maintenance Shop fence repairs. Um, currently, that wooden fence, if you've ever been by the Physical Activities Center, you're driving kind of through the park, it's starting to fall over into the parking lot. Um, and eventually, that fence section is going to fall, um, and we're going to have to replace it. And so this is really an item that needs to be tackled here shortly, especially as we're getting heavier winds in the park facilities. Um, and that would include, or those four projects would be the total of the eighty-eight thousand dollars. Excuse me, I missed one. Um, we have the Hembry Park Maintenance Shop that currently the drainage system is flooding. Um, and so what happens is that parking lot drainage system is backing up into the maintenance shop. Um, and that section um is then flooding out our equipment. So we're either having to move the equipment down to the maintenance area during rain or having to push that equipment down in different areas, um, or install some temporary pumps in order to clear that out. Um, and Harpreet, if I could ask you just to stop sharing your screen real quick, I'll just share a couple of photos of those items. Um, so this is the Big Creek uh Park decking section that we're dealing with right now. Um, currently exposed, you can see the dry rot section in those areas. Um, I'll script flip through these really quick. Um, these are the lights that I spoke about earlier um at East Roswell Park. You can start to see the dry rot taking place in this space here um that needs to be replaced. And this is a former um light pole project that we had that actually went too long without getting them replaced, and they ended up falling over in the park facility. Um, and then as you move through, this is the decking area around the Visual Arts Center. Um, underneath that decking section. Let me just give it a second. Um, you can start to see the dry rot taking place underneath that deck area. Um, and then it moves into the top side of the deck. Um, and then this is the Hembry Park uh maintenance area during the last uh recent flooding event that we had. Um, essentially, the drain here is plugged up, and so all the water starts to back up into the maintenance shop area. So that just give you a sense of why um we're trying to tackle these projects now uh moving forward. And then I think Harpreet, I've got one slide after that. Maybe go one more, uh, excuse me, the, at the bottom of that, the Bill Johnson exterior doors for twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, this, we currently are having issues with actually locking, securing the doors at the Bill Johnson Community Center. This funds the highest priorities of those doors. Um, we're requesting those right now so that we can secure them. The result of not funding that portion of it is sometimes we have to call our staff in after hours to bring the maintenance staff in to actually get the doors to shut and lock um as they currently exist. And then beyond that, we've got five thousand dollars for uh the Smith Plantation that we're recommending to go unfunded uh at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Leatherman. Does Council have any questions? Okay, you guys are quiet. Uh, the next item, I'll go back. Oh, we've got transportation. I don't want to skip over them.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So just very quickly, we just got four bullets on this one slide for transportation. So the first item is the citywide road resurfacing and reconstruction program. We are requesting two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Uh, you may recall, this is the absolute minimal amount the city needs to fund for resurfacing for this fiscal year to get the maximum uh amount offered by LMEC, um, LMEC program by GDOT. Uh, so this is the minimum amount we need to get the maximum amount offered to us. So this is critical. You have already approved the list of roads that are going to be resurfaced with this amount and the LMEC money. And you have already approved for us to move forward with the application, but before we can submit the application to GDOT to get the LMEC funds, we want to fulfill the commitment of having this match programmed into the city's budget. Next item is the zero-turn mower replacement. So this is just one of the several mowers we have and the piece of equipment we're requesting to replace is uh just very old. It has completed its useful life. There's a lot of downtime uh for that equipment and expensive repairs, so it's time for it to be uh replaced. So that's also a critical request for us. We want to have the new mower in place uh before the growing season starts at the beginning of spring. Uh, next item is the Bridge Maintenance and Safety Program. We're requesting fifty thousand dollars for several of the guardrails all along the local roads that have been hit during accidents. So it becomes a very critical safety issue. Uh, if an another accident happened at the exact same spot, the guardrail is either not there or it's broken to prevent that accident and to become a more severe accident. So this is also a critical need uh uh to for the guardrail repairs. The next item is actually, we, our staff is recommending to remove for now. Uh, we'll come back at a later time if and when we need that heavy-duty concrete mixer. So it's just the top three bullets that we are requesting for approval tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions? Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of question. So what is the deadline for uh the application with GDOT? Question number one, the deadline. And my second question is the Bridge Ma- Maintenance and Safety Programs to replace some rails that have been damaged. I understood correctly, and if so, have you, have we collected money from the insurance uh to repair those rails already?
Yes, it just, it just depends on the type of accident. If the accident has a a police report where we know who caused the accidents, and if they had the insurance, we always go back to the insurance company, whether it's a guardrail, it's a signal pole, it's a pedestrian signal, whatever infrastructure within the public rider was there, we always uh go after the insurance company if there is one identified and if there is a police report. Uh, the first question about the uh LMEC application. So I'm not hundred percent sure about the deadline, the due date for that application, but we must get the application submitted uh to receive the money and then hire a contractor uh to start the resurfacing program for the FY twenty one funds uh at the beginning of spring. So it's, we only have two, three more months to submit to GDOT uh for approval and receive the funds and run the contract uh through the process. So it's not a lot of time that we have on our hands now.
Thank you.
Additional comments, questions? Thank you. Now I'm going to um go back to Harpreet, and she's going to do a presentation on partner organizations. And when she's finished with that, we will hear from the Arts Fund.
Thank you, ma'am. So uh we just have a few other policy considerations that I'd like to go over. Um, so we have the partner organizations that had submitted uh their budgets during the FY twenty-twenty-one uh budget process, and they had reduced their requests from prior levels uh significantly. And then partner organizations were provided the opportunity uh to submit funding requests for consideration during the first quarter budget review. Uh, and only Roswell Arts Fund has requested additional funds in the amount of sixty-two thousand dollars, which you will see on the next slide. Uh, no additional funding for partner organizations is currently included in this uh first quarter budget amendment uh that we are presenting. So this slide uh provides a summary of what each partner organization has submitted uh before COVID had started, and then their reduced requests post-COVID, which is that orange column that you see. And then what was approved during uh the budget process. And the last column uh lists what has been requested for first quarter, and you only see one amount in that column for the sixty-two thousand requested by Roswell Arts Fund. Uh, and I'll hand it over to you, ma'am, uh now to um ask them to speak a little about their requests, or if you have any questions.
Yes, what we'll do is hear from the Arts Fund, and then I'll open it up to council for questions.
You might.
Do, do we have someone from the Arts Fund? I I was thinking Mr. Hitch said that we had someone that would be speaking?
Is Gila Sanders on? Yeah.
I believe we're looking for Gila Sanders.
Hello?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Yes, hello, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Henry and City Council, um, for this opportunity, and thank you, Harpreet, and all of the Finance Department for all of your work on this. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, so this is the first time I have a chance to present a request, so I wanted to start by saying how much we appreciate your partnership and your commitment to the arts in Roswell, which has made it possible for Roswell Arts Fund to exist. Um, City of Roswell and Roswell Arts Fund have been working together for over five years to make Roswell a center for the arts, and our initiatives have been appreciated um far and wide. Um, I also wanted to mention that your investment is not just in the arts for art's sake, but in the well-being of our community. And never before has this been as true and visible as this past year. And if it wasn't for your leadership, uh, none of what we do, uh, Roswell Arts Fund would be possible, so thank you. So I'm here to discuss um our Q-one request, and I wanted to remind you that these numbers were originally submitted by us in December of two thousand and nineteen. So a year later, and still responding to um the ongoing crisis, we are in a very different place and have adjusted our programs to serve the community while also honoring our commitments under our MOU with the city to advance. And have adjusted our programs to serve the community while also honoring our commitments under our MOU with the city to advance arts in Roswell. So as you know, this year we introduced a number of new and important projects. And we have been able to do that thanks to the generosity of private funders. So we are not expecting or asking city to support any new initiative at a time of deep uncertainty. But we do rely on city support to fulfill our MOU. And while there's always a matching component to our projects and our financial model counts on private sponsorships and individual donations. We do need your commitment to carry forth the flagship programs that have become an expected tradition really for the community. And so we need your commitment particularly to present Art Around. Because without city funding, the multi-year investments that the city of Roswell has already made in Art Around. Risks to go backwards and the sculpture pads will be empty come March. So I also wanted to mention, please know that we always intended to become more independent from an operations standpoint. And have been making a lot of progress in that regards. In the original ask for FY21, for example, compared to the previous fiscal year. We had already reduced our overall request by 15% and our operational expense request by 33%. This year, we have already received over $40,000 in grants as compared to 5,000 in 2019 and 2018. We raised over $37,000 in sponsorships from over 25 companies, a third of which are first time sponsors. So we're trying hard, but despite our best efforts, 2020 has brought on many unexpected challenges. And the void that was left by the budget cuts in June have been really impossible to fill privately. Particularly in a year that foundation giving has changed and local businesses have struggled so much. So we need you to continue our work and we kindly ask for your commitment now. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions, comments? Councilmember Polierma?
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. So appreciate, appreciate that discussion. So I guess a question, you mentioned just the risk that the Art Around project that's outside that many Roswell residents enjoy. You mentioned that's, that's at risk. You said come March. So I guess help me understand the, the risk. If, if instead of some funding being approved tonight, some funding was approved in January. So obviously, you know, I understand the, the earlier the better. I totally get that. But just knowing it has been a tough year, help me understand just how it would be impossible if it was approved in January instead of tonight.
I appreciate that question. Sorry, I appreciate the question. So usually we start planning for Art Around in the fall. So by October, we release an RFP. And then by December, we assemble a panel to select the artwork. And, and we also start fundraising because while we request about $40,000 from the city. For Art Around, the budget overall is about $78,000. And so we make up the rest by finding private sponsorships and also get donations from individual donors. And we need to do that now. So without the commitment from city and not knowing, we're not going to be able to fill $78,000. We can do half of that privately. But if we don't have the commitment, we can't really release an RFP and commit to the artist. That we will have a program on, we don't really know if the program can take place. And, and if we wait until January, really, we won't have enough time to submit the RFP. Get all the responses to the selection and then install by March. We do have funding coming from last year for the deinstallation. And so the deinstallation is going to go ahead as planned for February. And that's why I was mentioning that come March, if we can't install new sculptures, the pads will be, will be empty. Does that clarify?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Welsey?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Gila, for walking us through the process. I also would, as, as we have talked, I understand that you're making some adjustments to the Art Around program to help. Reduce some of the costs on a more, on a more ongoing basis with moving to kind of a five-two schedule. So just I thought that might be something that council would be interested in hearing about.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk about that too. And I did send some information about that to council and the mayor via email a few weeks ago. So usually if you look at historical figures, we've usually requested $55,000 for Art Around. For FY21, we requested 40. And the reason is that we have been discussing going to a five by two model. Meaning that we would keep each sculpture for 24 months and then, or 23 months rather. And then rotate five every year to provide more continuity. But also to decrease the, the expenses for installation and the installation. So this would be year one. It does require some negotiating with the artist. So again, not knowing if the program can move forward. We have no guarantee that we will have five of the current sculptures available come March. But the intention is to move toward a model like that. That will again, give us the opportunity to provide some new sculptures and also spend less on the installation and installation.
Thank you.
Additional questions, comments from council? Yes, councilmember Zapata?
Thank you. So this $40,000 you're requesting today will be on top of the $50,000 approved for FY2021?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Thank you. Harper, we'll go back to you.
Thank you, ma'am. So continuing with the policy, other policy considerations, we'll talk about the use of reserves here on this particular slide. So the FY21 approved budget, as you all know, included the use of reserves to balance our operating budget. And that was a little over $458,000. And city budget principles dictate that general fund operating expenses are funded with operating revenues. However, this year has been very different due to COVID. And due to that, due to the uncertainty surrounding that, we had to take this particular measure. But in this first quarter budget recommendation, we are recommending amending and fully replenishing those reserve funds of four, of a little over 458,000. And then moving to the employee compensation. So just as a reminder, there were no salary increases included in the fiscal year 2021 approved budget. And during the November 9th council meeting, Mayor and Council had approved a one-time compensation. For employees making less than 100,000. And for those making over 100,000, the decision was deferred on whether to give them a one-time compensation. And so the recommended amounts for the one-time compensation was $2,000 for full-time employees and $1,000 for part-time employees. And on this slide, we kind of provide a summary of how the calculations were made based on the hire date. And I will not go into all those details. Those guidelines are provided on this particular slide. And here on this slide, so at the last council meeting on November 9th, as I mentioned earlier, Mayor and Council had deferred the discussion on one-time compensation. For those employees that make over 100,000. And we put together these numbers for what it would cost to pay the one-time compensation to those particular employees. So for general fund, it would be a cost of $42,000. In the water fund, it would be $1,000. Stormwater utility fund, it would be $1,000. Solid waste fund would be $1,500 and the fleet services fund would be $500. Giving us a total cost of $46,000 across all funds. To provide that one-time compensation to the employees making over $100,000. On this slide, we, this slide provides an operating summary of the general fund. So based on all the previous information that I shared on the previous slides. So the total available funds after the revenue and expenditure adjustments are a little over 1.1 million dollars. And as you will see, these are split between a recurring and one time. So the recurring amount of that 1.1 million dollars is a little, a little over $300,000. And the one-time portion of that is a little over $800,000. And the first quarter department operating request that we are recommending funding is a total of $42856. And then we also have the $458,328 for replenishing the reserve funds that were used during the budget process to balance the operating budget. So we are putting that funding back in there. So that would leave us with an available funding of $258,147. Our general fund, so we have a reserve policy of 25% that we maintain in the general fund. That is over, a little over $18 million that we have. And we also have the reserve that we had put aside due to financial, due to the financial uncertainty created by COVID. During the budget process, which is close to 1.6 million dollars. On this slide, we have a summary of the capital side of things. So as, as I had said on the previous slide, so the revenue adjustments and the expenditure adjustments. With that, we have a total available funding of a little over $1 million. And the capital requests based on what we are funding right now, currently proposing funding is $1,4883. So that leaves us with an available fund balance of $39,200 are still available to allocate towards capital projects. This next section is on our enterprise fund. So we have a few budget requests from our enterprise funds, which is the stormwater, solid base and water funds. And I would, ma'am, again, this is EPW. So Mr. Dan Skalski?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll go this, through this rather quickly. You've had a long evening. In terms of operating requests, beginning with the solid waste fund. We're proposing to add a part-time position in our support services division. And this is actually shared funding between solid waste and water. So what you see there is the solid waste portion of that. It's a position that allows us to take great advantage of some of the talent that's in the Roswell local area on a part-time basis. And saves us approximately half of what it costs typically when we bring in that kind of outside expertise through our standby consultants. The position allocation changes, you'll see this, and I'm not going to speak about it in the other funds. This is just a reallocation of how our support services are being charged out among the various funds. Harper's already mentioned the employee compensation. In terms of maintenance capital, we have to buy trucks routinely. And a commercial front loader garbage truck is what you see in that first bullet. That fleet just needs to keep rolling. The recycling center semi-truck, semi-trailer replacement is about one of six of those trailers that have to be replaced on a rotating basis, about one per year. And finally, the baler for the recycling center. This is probably one of our more critical needs. It's on its, the end of its useful life. It's about 20 years old. It was original equipment and we've had it refurbished a couple of times. It's getting difficult to repair and difficult to find skilled folks who can repair it. It's manufactured in Minnesota and there's not too many people who service it down here. Next slide, Harper. So in the water fund, that first bullet is the other half of that part-time position I was just talking about. The next position below that, the full-time water construction backflow specialist. It may be the most important personnel position we've requested. And this will again offset, we would have to outside, outsource this service now. We've tried to do it with existing staff resources. And Chris Boyd just does not have the bandwidth or the capacity in his team, which is rather small to begin with. To take care of the construction inspection activities and our backflow program, which is a little behind schedule and Chris's schedule for, for moving that program forward. So that's the position that you see there. We've talked about allocation changes. Moving on to maintenance capital. This is just the extension of our waterline replacement program, the remaining of the capital budget. And the service truck replacement is in here. Those trucks have a long lead time, so we'd really like to move that order in this year. It'll take about probably a year for that truck to be fabricated and delivered. In terms of one-time capital, the, a number of improvements here, primarily with backflow improvements. This was identified with existing metering throughout the city that needs to be upgraded to meet current standards. As part of our last review and audit. The interconnection improvements are to automate a couple of those control valves. And the water plant improvements, we are now having to make some security improvements. And also some tank or elevated tank controls need to be upgraded. So that they can be basically improve service throughout the system with better controls. The well site improvements is largely some repair and replacement of some older equipment. In one case, literally a tree fell on some of our equipment and it has to be repaired or replaced for the well site to be operational. And if you go to the next slide, stormwater and fleet are much simpler. Again, the position allocation changes. We do have a request to release the remainder of the stormwater master project capital fund, which is the 550,000. And the large equipment replacement is just a gator that helps with off-road equipment and material delivery. Next slide, this is the last one. Very little in fleet in terms of this request, just the allocation changes. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Skalski.
So this next section provides an update on the capital projects that were frozen during the budget process. Mayor and Council had approved a resolution temporarily freezing certain capital projects in June 2020. And that particular resolution expired on September 30th. And budget staff, all of us, we met with the departments to discuss their needs for the upcoming quarter in terms of their capital projects. And we are recommending a continuation of the freeze for certain projects. And you will see that on the next few slides and this list is included in your packets. So I will not go through each of these capital projects line by line, but just to let you know. So this particular column here, you have the available budget for each of these projects. And then here in this column, the freeze amount column, it shows you the amount that we are recommending to stay frozen. And then the next column is where we are, gives you the amount that we are recommending can be reallocated. And then the last column is the unfreeze amount column. That is the recommendation from us as to the amounts that can be unfrozen. For any of these projects, based on the discussions that we have had with each of the departments. And the recommended action is provided to here, is provided here in this third column here. And so just to give you an idea, so the grand total here, based on all of these adjustments that we have made. And based on the discussions we have had with the departments. and based on the discussions we have had with the departments, we have the total available funds for reallocation for the capital projects is a little over a million dollars. And this is the same amount that you had seen on some of the previous slides. And if you'll have any questions on any of these projects, I'll be happy to answer them later during the presentation. So just to summarize everything, so what we are asking for tonight is for mayor and council to consider and the approval of the requested, for the following, requested for the following items. First is the revenue and expenditure adjustments. And then the budget requests that we are recommending funding for first quarter. And then approval for the resolution for temporarily freezing certain approved capital project funds. So that is the end of my presentation, ma'am. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Before I open it up to the public, does council have any additional questions, comments to make at this time? Yes, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Harpreet. Great presentation. Just, just a couple of questions. So what we saw tonight, I, I just want to understand what the differences were from the presentation on November ninth to what was presented tonight. And, and the differences that I saw, and perhaps I missed it on November ninth, was one additional request for software and hardware for digital plan review for two thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. That was not in the November ninth request.
Actually, ma'am, it was, it was there in the November ninth presentation, but it was a different amount altogether. I think if I'm not mistaken, it was thirty-nine thousand two hundred. But now that amount is reduced to the two thousand nine hundred that you are seeing currently.
Okay, I just did not pick up thirty-nine thousand in last, in the last week, I apologize. And then the employee compensation, the one-time amounts that are in here, the various amounts of forty-two thousand and then going into the different amounts. Can you explain those to me again? Previously, we had the one point two million, which we redirected towards cares. So what are these amounts that are in here?
Sure, I'll just, let me just pull up the slide.
Like I'm on package, packet page seventy-two or, or here as well.
Right, so this, this particular slide, what the amounts that we are showing here is the recommended one-time compensation for those staff members who make more than hundred thousand, which was not approved the last time round. So last time, what was approved was the one point two million dollars for those employees, full-time and part-time employees who make less than hundred thousand. So that, that was what was approved the last time. Now, this is the, because the discussion on all those who make over hundred thousand was deferred to tonight's council meeting. So we put these amounts together, these numbers together as to what that would cost to, you know, give out the one-time compensation to all those who make over hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Additional, yes, councilmembers.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions on page seventy-two from the packet. Recommended expenditure adjustment. I see most of them is saving, saving, saving regarding the Jifa loan deferral, July, December. I imagine that this still isn't on the balance sheet as a, as a debt. So when is it going to be deferral to? Because, you know, one thing is deferred, another thing is saving, it's two different things. Deferral, I understand it still is on the balance sheet as a debt and has still to be paid. So it's going to be paid during this fiscal year or it's going to be deferred for twenty twenty-two fiscal year?
Councilmembers, so I'm not sure about how long that has been deferred to and I'm, I'm not sure if Ryan is on here. But what's happened here is basically they have just deferred the payment for us on that particular loan that was taken. But I do not know for how long that has been deferred.
Okay, because it still should be on our balance sheet as a debt.
Yes, it will still show up on the balance sheet. The loan amount will still show up on the balance sheet, yes.
Harpreet, this is Dan, if I could just jump in. I believe that was a policy decision and the only reason I know is because we have it on the water plant loan as well. They're just extending the loan for one additional term, so that, one additional year.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So Harpreet, great job as always walking through the presentation. I, I appreciate it. And, and great, great job to all the staff members that, that kind of walked through the different, different needs. And I think, I think a lot of good ads and beneficial ads. So what, what I want to bring up is, it seemed to me there, it seemed to me like I might have heard a few that something is really lost by not going immediately. And one, one, one example I'll give is Mohammed with the, with that matching grant. We really need to make sure we're receiving all that money to get, to do road resurfacing. And so that's something that sounded like it's, it's, it's pretty important. Everything, of course, sounded beneficial, the sooner the better. And, and I strongly believe as we get into, to item number four, walk through, we'll walk through a lot of ads that really the, the taxpayers benefit as soon as, you know, the sooner the better, we can, we can get these going. And, and basically what I want to throw out to council is, I know when Councilman Tizer brought it up at first, suggested, I believe, November twenty-fifth being the, the second meeting of, of January. It does make me wonder if it'd be beneficial instead if it would be the first meeting in January, which is the eleventh. Just, just making it a little sooner to be able to get all these, all these great budget updates going. I'm flexible either way. Again, there's certainly a lot of ads in this budget that I support. I still feel there's, there's important opportunities for, for a few cuts as, as well as some important priorities for taxpayers that I don't feel are, are being addressed. And, and again, would love the opportunity to, to accomplish it tonight and really go through these items or certainly supportive, again, of a compromise and, and deferring, going through it in January.
Councilmember Judy.
So to Mike's point, I think that January ninth might be too soon. I think January twenty-third might be better. Because if we can come out of the Ju, January seventh strategic meeting, strategic plan meeting with some direction, have some time to get with staff and other council members on that. And then possibly, if needed, have a work session on the ninth regarding this, where we can go through everything. Obviously, in a work session, if there's time, we have, citizens can ask questions and, and then vote on the twenty-third. I think that's the most complete process and would support that if, if everybody else would on the additional things. Again, in this budget here, I, I don't, I don't really want to parse through a lot of it. I think that, you know, what's critical is critical, obviously, health and safety reasons, you know, or if we don't do something to a building now, it's going to cost more in the long run. Or if we have a contract that needs to be signed, I think those are issues. And I heard a lot of that during this presentation. I guess my question would be, through the presentation, for those that don't want to approve some of this this evening, what would you not want to approve versus what would you want to approve in the critical elements that were given by, by staff?
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for the comments. And thank you, staff, for the work that you've put into it. I just, one comment I just wanted to make upfront is just to say thank you to staff for making all the pivots that you have this year and to the partner organizations as well. I know it takes a lot of leadership and not, you know, from, from you guys for each of your departments to have basically changed your business plan overnight. And I know there's some things that just can't stop, that just don't stop. I mean, the wear and tear and the need to maintain and, and, and do maintenance, resurfacing, reconstruction work on the park. So I heard a lot of things that I do think need to get moving, particularly in wrecking parks and in transportation. Some things that would improve service and comm dev that I would support, you know, moving ahead tonight if poss, if, if possible, if there was some consensus. I also appreciate the work from the Roswell Arts Fund that they've done in, in pivoting as one of our partner organizations, completely kind of reinventing how their programs were delivered this spring and summer through some virtual concerts, through some pop-up concerts, some pop-in concerts with the senior retirement homes. And then this photography exhibit that's coming. And then knowing the urgency of getting started with art around this year and, and knowing the time that's involved with that, I would also like to propose adding the, the forty thousand dollars to fund, to fund that project into consideration for approval tonight with looking at the additional projects later on.
Thank you. Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. To Councilman Judy's point or, or question, what I'd prefer to do is not look at the entire budget and just, and just really go back and forth about what should be carved out. Instead, I think we should, I actually like the way you kind of defined it. You know, health and safety is, if by not doing it, is it going to fall apart in the next, what is it, seven to eight weeks? And, and, and so I'd, I'd like to, I'd like for us to come up with that list of what did we hear that is a real health and safety risk if we don't, if we wait eight weeks? What is going to fall apart and really become a lot more costly or dangerous if we wait that eight weeks? Let's come up with that list and let's, let's vote on those items. And then, and, and again, you know, if it's health and safety, I'm optimistic it will all be unanimous tonight and, and then, and then be ready for that full public process in January.
Before I go out to the public, I, I would like to just add my two cents. Next month, our staff is going to start working on the twenty-two budget. I mean, they're going to start that process again. We promised quarterly reviews. This first quarterly review is taking us so long that we're, that we're coming up on the mid-year review. I just, my concern is, number one, staff is treading water, trying to get things done, but not, no commitment on funding. And then they're then going to be looking at the twenty-two fiscal year budget. So we're behind the eight ball now. As Councilmember Zapata says, I don't think we can kick this cam any further down the road. Having said that, we've got one person in the public that would like to speak. And so if Mr. Michael Harris is available, and then I'll bring it back to council.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. First, I want to thank.
Oh, sorry, you're kind of breaking up.
Can you hear me now?
We, can you turn up your audio?
I'll try that, yes.
There you go. Perfect.
Okay, so I want to first thank you guys for your support for the Arts Fund and for all of the programs that you do. I'm particularly concerned about the funding for the Arts Fund at this moment because we've already had our budget cut by more than fifty percent. And with the tour coming up, hopefully, the Art Round Tour coming up, I think it'll be really, really catastrophic for the momentum that we started to have that funding out there. And even that forty thousand dollars is less than what we need. But the team is willing to go out and plant a raise at the balance. I think that is a model for the arts, public arts in Fort Walton, which you should stand with the organization and continue that, that great work. I know there's lots of other priorities and there's lots of other places where you can and should invest money. But this is one of those things that affects the entire community. It speaks to who we are as a community, great restaurants, great parks, great art, great people. And I think to see those empty stands around the city in the spring, which has to be depressing. And the kids, I know, look forward to it. My family, they walk through the parks all the time and I'm sure you guys do. So I appreciate your support. Please, if you can give us this forty thousand dollars this year, we sure would appreciate it. If you give to us tonight, it will be very, very helpful to get the ball back in play. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I'll bring it back to council. Comments, questions? Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, help me to understand here, why are we discussing on this item, the Roswell Art Fund, when it's on the next item? Why are we being heavy lobby here for forty thousand dollars on this item? That doesn't, didn't include in the pass, I guess, and, you know, I don't see here on this list of staff. I want to understand why we've been loving so hard in this item number three, when we do have a recommendation to include something adding to the Art Roswell Fund, matching grant toward Art Roswell, Art Around Roswell. So help me to understand why are we including new items here that were not there? But just want to, to understand, you know.
Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and Councilmember Zapata is a great question. I think that some of the confusion came about in the way that was presented at the work session. It was presented on a page that said staff recommendation. So there was some assumption, you know, particularly on my part, that that was being brought forward as a part of the, the budget for, budget requisition for first quarter. And when that was actually presented to council, it was not. Since, if you'll remember November ninth meeting, we ended up deferring the entire discussion for that budget, basically. And it's kind of come to our attention that this is a very urgent need with some deadlines coming up because we need to go, because the Arts Fund needs to go out and make the request for submissions and put together a public art selection committee to take, to review the selections and then schedule the, the installations with the artist. So that's why it, it is something that's urgent that I believe was intended to be discussed with this portion of the budget, but was just somehow, did not make it onto what was presented to council on the ninth.
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So, you know, again, as, as I mentioned earlier, there's, there's so many great ads and, and I think, you know, all, all seven of us completely understand and take very seriously that we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we are looking at really the full budget and making, and making really the best decisions for, for our taxpayers. And we, of course, wish we did not have limited money, in which case it becomes very easy and we just go ahead and fund all these great things tonight. At, at the same, at the same time, I think we do have to make some tough decisions. And I think what makes, what makes a better process is the fact that I, I do agree, the fact that we've got this, which is a long quarterly budget process. We're going to have the mid-year, et cetera. But I feel by setting up the right process now, by having, having the work session that was discussed, public, public input, et cetera, I feel like we're actually going to improve and expedite the follow, the next quarter's meetings and et cetera. So I feel like we're doing more work now, but, but it's, it's, it's for the right cause. And, and again, it just, it just comes down to, I, I do think we have to make some tough decisions tonight because there's so many things I, I'd love to support tonight, but we have to look at that whole picture. Because again, you know, as, as everybody's aware, it, it, it really, it certainly is not my ideal to really slow down correcting compensation for our police officers or really providing more support to our, our fire department, really bringing in real targeted economic development into our city, which, which both the east side and the west side absolutely want and see as urgent, as well as giving them some funding to support our local businesses. And then, of course, transportation and traffic, one of the, the biggest complaints and issues we get. we get from our residents that they want us to really fix and work on. We have the ability to move that forward. I'd love to move forward tonight. But at the same time, I think it's fair that we compromise, we work together, and we have a full discussion of that towards January. So again, I go back to what Councilman Judy and Councilman Tizer, I feel, have kind of hinted at of, we've got a very large budget amendment tonight, many different items that we could certainly debate each item for hours. But I recommend instead, let's pull out the ones that we really do feel is a health and safety issue, is a falling apart issue, something's really lost, and really vote on each of those tonight, knowing that we'll be bringing everything back for a full official vote within eight weeks. And with the Arts Fund, one, that's where I do see myself supporting $40,000. I have concern and hesitation of doing that tonight. I hear the reasons and the concerns that they, we wouldn't want to have them send out an RFP prior to having the funding. At the same time, it's been a tough year, tough year for everyone, and hoping that just many can understand that there is support in Roswell for the arts. And at the same time, of just the goal for that whole holistic budget that we're going to, we're going to be moving forward in January is something that I'm confident and optimistic is going to include more money for the arts. But I just have concern with rushing that tonight when there's so many other things that would really benefit Roswell residents as well if we started tonight, but in fairness, need to wait in January. So those are some initial thoughts and reactions I have.
Councilmember Tizer?
Thank you, Mayor. So let me be the first to throw one into the pile. The fire department has requested $67,500 for headsets so they can talk to each other on their fire trucks.
Second?
I did not ask for a motion yet.
So I would make a motion that that be the first one through, if you would agree to that, because it clearly seems to be a safety issue.
So we've got a motion to approve headsets for the fire department. Do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Palermo. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously.
All right, I picked a good one. Let's try another one.
Councilmember Tizer?
All right, hold on a second. Let's try another one here. Let's see. The police department has asked for two things that seem to be needed. They wanted their tourniquet replacements and their ballistic shields.
Is that a motion?
I'd move to approve both of those.
We've got a motion. Councilmember Hall, is that a second? Seconded by Councilmember Hall. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously.
We have a streak going.
I'm getting nervous, by the way.
Councilmember Tizer?
Thank you very much, Mayor. The next one that I would look at is the $168,000 in rec and parks for the janitorial services. I don't know if any of you saw the article today, but the doubling of COVID cases across the country went from a little bit under 2 million to a little bit over 4 million in the month between September and, between October and November. I think we need to make sure we're cleaning our facilities, and so that would be my next one.
Motion by Councilmember Tizer, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wilson. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And that would be in favor, it would be Wilson, Tizer, Palermo, Zapata, and Judy. All those opposed? Councilmember Hall, motion carries. Councilmember Tizer?
All right, I missed one. The next one is again on operating for wrecked parks, their $10,000 for their elevator maintenance. That item seemed like it was kind of important so we don't have people stuck in elevators.
Is that a motion, Councilmember Tizer?
Yeah, ma'am.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Tizer. Councilmember Judy, is that a second? All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously.
All right, let's go to Park and Rec Capital. The trail repairs that are $50,000, I saw those pictures, so I'd make a motion, we get those fixed for our citizens before they fall through them.
And is that the only capital project you want to approve for wrecked parks?
No, I think they're 88,000, there are four projects there. I also marked this health and safety.
Okay, can we?
Inside there. If you want to put those two together, that's fine with me.
Okay, so you don't want to do the light pole replacement? And you don't want to do the exterior door replacement?
I might go with the exterior door. I'd like to hold on the light poles if possible.
Okay, we've got a motion. Does anybody need clarification on that? Okay, so it's my understanding, Councilmember Tizer, is suggesting trail repairs, recreation and parks maintenance program, exterior door replacement. He is not recommending athletic field improvements, light pole replacements. Councilmember Palermo?
You help me understand or remind me why the door was an urgent need that couldn't wait until January?
The doors can't be locked and they have to send employees out at night, overtime, to lock them?
Thank you.
Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you, Mayor. How is this, the criteria that Councilmember Palermo established, the safety and health, you know, how the door will comply with this? I mean, is it stretching this, you know, criteria for the door? Or is this just a convenience thing versus being safety and public health? So I don't know, if we're going to stick to the criteria or we are just going to add new criterias of convenience or something like that? So I just want to make sure that we are still working under the same criteria that Councilmember Palermo suggested.
Number one, I don't think that we have council approval on the criteria, but Councilmember Tizer, your hands up?
Yeah, thank you. To keep moving forward, we can come back. Councilman Zapata will include the 50,000 trail repairs and the 88,000 for the health and safety maintenance program as my motion.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second? Councilmember Judy, is that a second? All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously.
All right. I'm on transportation, the citywide road resurfacing for $254,000. It's not a health and safety, but it is a contractual. So I move, we move that forward.
And did you want to include the bridge maintenance and safety program?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay, so we've got the citywide road resurfacing and reconstruction program, 254, and then we've got bridge maintenance and safety program, 50,000. Is that your motion, Councilmember Tizer?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wilson. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously.
All right. The next one on my list would be the 40,000 for Art Around. Again, I see that as a contractual.
Motion by Councilmember Tizer to approve $40,000 for Art Around program. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wilson. Do I have some clarifying questions here? Councilmember Palermo?
It's not clarifying question, but comment. So that's something where I see the contractual aspect, that it's certainly preferable and certainly makes it a lot easier. And at the same time, I just see it as something where disclosing to these, I think it makes sense to still send out, to send out the RFP. It's something I do support as I'm looking at the items for number four that I think are really important and valuable. I had $20,000. I do feel with all these, it is possible to move to 40,000, something I support. But given that I just do see other priorities that are more urgent and needed, I'm not able to support it tonight. Again, I certainly would support it in January.
Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, there's so many important things here that are for safety or health, public health, or benefit the majority of the community, like an intersection improvement. So I think that, you know, getting the 40,000 is not giving priority to other more important things for the community that will benefit a broad aspect of the community. So, and it's not even, was not even on this item. So if this is the case, what do we bring also to discuss the item of number four? To unify them, like we talked at the beginning, and I think that Councilmember Tizer was in agreement of that. So if we're going to discuss some new items here, I don't think that it's fair to just bring some others and not the one on item number four that we'll follow. So I think we are getting a little bit of distortion here, and I will appreciate if we leave this for later, this item, and we focus on the staff recommendation and according with our criteria of urgency that we need to approve today versus early January.
Councilmember Tizer?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want a clarification. Can someone clarify for me and for Councilmembers Zapata? This item was on the original presentations, I believe. I think the slide that's in here indicates that it was. It was at the bottom of the partnership slide that we saw at the previous to the committee presentation of this and the November 9th presentation. If somebody could just clarify that, I think that would be a good thing to know.
So the Roswell Arts Fund request was presented during the committee meeting and during the last council meeting. However, it was not shown as funded. It was shown as unfunded.
Got it, thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, just to comment, I, the Arts Fund needs the commitment for the funds to be able to send out an RFP, and they also need the commitment and in the confidence that the city has in the program to be able to go out and raise the additional funds from other businesses and from individuals. So I think showing this confidence and support for the arts is very important. I, you know, you all know how I feel about the program. You know, I feel like it has a lot of social, emotional, and economic benefits to the city, especially during this time, and would very much like to see it continue and for there to be some fresh, to be some great new sculptures and art there in the parks for us, for the city and the community this spring. So I would ask you to please approve this request at the current time.
Councilmember Judy?
And when I brought up the health, safety, welfare, I've also brought up earlier today with Councilman Palermo and others regarding contractual obligations that I felt might take us into a situation where we might have to prove something tonight that can't wait till January. In my humble opinion, I believe this can't wait till January for many reasons. And for me, going backwards on the arts in Roswell and having empty pallets sitting in parks come March, or even risking that at this point, which this, not funding this tonight, that might occur, and we might not have art in parks and might have blank concrete stat, you know, blank places in the parks over the next year. I can't, that's not Roswell. I don't think people there going to the parks expect to see that. And I think that for me tonight, looking at this as being contractual rather than a want or a luxury, I think that we've got to go forward with this. So I'm willing to vote on this tonight. I know we've got a motion and a second here, so I think we probably should vote.
Councilmember Hall?
Have a hard time with the mouse sometimes. Just going back to the arts, so many things have been pushed into the future because of COVID. And I just believe that this is something that if it's pushed, if we don't have it in March, we'll have it in April. I mean, it's a decision that I think makes sense to make in the whole scheme of things. So I get contracts that, or emails about contracts that have been postponed, and it's because of COVID, and people understand that. So for that reason, I'd like to move it to January to vote on that.
Councilmember Tizer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really good at counting to four, six, and sometimes five. And so what I might do here, rather than having one fail, is ask the following question. Three council members have proposed $20,000 to get the, so they see the commitment from the city. What about a concept, and I'll ask the Councilmember Hall, Palermo, and Zapata this question, where we move $20,000 now and $20,000 at our January meeting? That might provide some amount of commitment that they can get started raising money.
Thank you, Mayor. So my question will be, what else are you bringing from the, from the next item, number four? Because, you know, we have priorities. We have a very difficult year.
All right.
Wonderful. Great. And then, but we have priorities. We have a lot of requests from staff that need to get either better service, maintain the service, or even invest in assets owned by the taxpayers. So it's a difficult year, and everybody has to understand that. So if you want to prioritize, instead of March, instead of April, or make it in March, versus leaving it outside some other things that will benefit now the community, so that is fine. It's just how you prioritize your, the items here and the one on the next item, number four. So I think that, you know, not including the next item, number four, in this discussion is not in good faith. I think that is not technical properly to not include everything and just pick and choose. So I think that we should go from everything and vote on anything and everything. So I think that there is not healthy what we're doing and where we're going with this. And I will, I would say that I'm not, you know, comfortable with this process that we're doing now, right now, right on the fly here tonight.
Well, let me just say this, and I want to make some clarification points. And I sent this memo out, and the last paragraph is, if you recall, we came into the pandemic during the FY21 budget process. We agreed to focus on providing core services and moving existing projects already in progress forward. We agreed we need to preserve cash and review the budget quarterly and incrementally approve funds as we come out of the pandemic. Your department directors were tasked with retooling their operations and to narrow the focus to critical needs, and that is what was being presented in item number three this evening. Councilmember Tizer?
Thank you. Councilmembers Zapata telling me that I'm not being truthful or whatever, I think is really unnecessary. I simply asked the question, would that work? If that doesn't work, then I'm prepared to move on and come back to the difficult ones later and work our way through what I think are the easier ones. Okay? So I'm prepared to move forward on other items and come back to that one, rather than to be told I'm not being truthful. So let me continue, and I want to ask a question.
Councilmember Tizer, excuse me. Before you take the reins and move forward, can I just back us up a minute? Okay, we're going through and we're cherry picking things out of the general fund to approve or not approve. What I don't want to fall through the cracks, for example, is the 458,000 that we need to transfer back into our reserves. We haven't talked about the compensation for people over 100. the compensation for people over $100,000 a year. And most of, another thing very important is we haven't talked about the other funds. So we've got a solid waste fund, we've got a water and sewer fund, we've got a stormwater fund, a fleet fund. So all of these, excuse me, did somebody just interrupt me?
Didn't notice it.
All of these are very important. So as we're moving forward, I, I don't want to get stuck on one thing. I will also say this, and then I'll bring it back to you all, that the partner organizations, I will tell you this much, that while there was a request from the Arts Fund, it was the only request from partner organizations, our staff is not comfortable with partner organizations recommending those for approval because they are partner organizations. They were tasked at looking at efficiencies and incremental funding for the departments through the department heads. So while you were talking about the Arts Fund was not a part of the process, it was, it was just a parallel process that was going along. Okay, so Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you, Mayor, and I apologize. I thought it was unmute. My intention was to move to solid waste or to the enterprise funds and then come back to some of those other items to see if we could keep moving forward. But I have a question about the enterprise funds in general. Since they are business-related funds, do we want to select only those that meet the criteria? Or do we want to approve all of the ones that the people who run those business-related funds have asked for? And so I asked that question to get some clarification because it can either be one motion, or we can run through the ones that we think meet those criteria. So I asked the question to see what others have to say, Mayor, and then I'd be prepared to move in one direction or another, and then come back to those more controversial ones that you mentioned.
Thank you. And I'll get to you in a second, Councilmember Palermo. I would say my opinion is with our enterprise funds, I am not willing to get into a debate on these items that are, you know, in the, in these funds. That's what these funds are there for. Staff is recommending the use of the funds for those various projects. So I would, I personally would approve all of them, but I would have approved this budget as a whole tonight, too. So Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you. I have a two-part thing. So I'll say both of them. First one is a question for Harpreet, and she answered after I give my other comments, so I can go on mute. But the first one is, if I can be reminded, I believe one of the funds potentially, and I don't know if actually it's a question for Harpreet or if it's a question for Dan, but I believe one of the funds, it's projected to basically need, be running out of money and need to increase the fees. So if my memory is serving correct, I'd want to know which one that is, or hopefully my memory is not serving correct, in which case I'll be told, no, that's, that's not projected. So that's, that's one, because that's, that's relevant for me. And then separate, separate from that, I, I personally think with, within being enterprise funds, it makes, it makes sense to be combining similar to the, for each individual one. But, but I think it's, it should still be spelled out in the motion, similar to how it was done in the Parks and Recreation. So for the, for example, there were two or three items that were pulled together. And so I, I think that makes sense. And I would, I would need to see where, where I personally stand, but obviously I'm, I'm one of only seven for, for voting tonight. So those are, those are my reactions.
Before I get to you, Councilmember Hall, Councilmember Tyser and Councilmember Wilson, you did have a motion on the floor to approve the Arts Fund. Would you agree to withdraw that, and we'll come back to it later?
Yeah, Mayor Henry, I withdrew the motion when I couldn't count to four.
Oh, I did not understand that. Neither did our lawyer. So that was, so Councilmember Wilson, do you agree to withdraw it and commit to this again?
I come back to it later this evening.
Yeah, yeah.
Later this evening, yes.
Okay. Thank you. So Councilmember Hall.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Just on the enterprise funds, they all have the employee compensation one-time payout in there. I would like to see that moved out and brought that back to a different discussion. The under 100,000 people were basically allocated out of COVID funds, and these are all being discussed under either enterprise or operating funds. And I'd like to have a different conversation about that.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, okay, Harpreet.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you address how, okay, so when we talked about the 1.2 million for the compensation? Okay, and you, you all broke it out into the enterprise funds as well, so that all of it wasn't coming out of the general fund. Is that correct?
So let me explain this a little. So the 1.2 million that was approved for the one-time compensation was only for the general fund. That is what it was approved for, because the CARES Act money is only in the general fund. It is not part of the other funds. So the one-time compensation for the other funds, that was approved for employees making below the 100,000, comes out of those funds themselves. It does not come out of the 1.2 million of, that, that is the CARES Act funding.
And so I want to be perfectly clear. We do not have a fund called the CARES Act Fund.
No, ma'am.
We have a general fund.
That is correct.
Yes, thank you. So Councilmember Hall, are you suggesting that we don't, you want to reverse the decision to fund the compensation for people less than 100,000? Is that what you're saying?
No, I misunderstood. I thought this was the over 100,000 people, and they were in these fund accounts.
Yes, ma'am, you are correct. These are the amounts that you see in, shown in these enterprise funds are for the employees who make over the 100,000.
So it includes both, correct?
No, it just, just includes the ones making over 100,000. So the $1,500 that you see for the solid waste fund, yeah.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tyser.
All right, let me try this. Would, would the council be supportive of approving all of the items that are in the solid waste, water, sewer, stormwater, and fleet, with the exception of the employee compensation, which we would discuss later?
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm sorry, but, you know, it seems like kind of confusing this process. Instead of going line by line to either approve, deny, or defer, we're jumping back and forth, back and forth, and it's very confusing, you know, for everybody, including the public. So, I mean, if we're going to pretty much do everything, why don't we go line by line, and then Councilmember Tyser can make a motion either to approve, deny, or defer. And then we know exactly what is deferred, we know exactly what is approved, and we know exactly, and we make sure that we don't miss any single item here. Because I see that it's, it's jumping around, it's getting very confusing, and we might spend hours and hours and confuse everybody. And then on top of that, we might be even leaving some items without any vote out there. So I would suggest to go item by item and make it a motion per item.
Thank you for your suggestion. It's very clear to me what's going on here. I think that while, I told you before, my preference would have been to approve this budget. I believe Councilmember Tyser is willing to bend over backwards, but also we're trying to get this adopted sometime within this year, maybe. So what we're moving toward in our, so Councilmember Tyser, did you make a motion? Now, I can't remember if you made a motion or not.
No, ma'am, I asked, I asked for comments from.
I, I approve with what you want to do with the enterprise funds. Councilmember Palermo.
So I, I actually, I, I think I support it as well, except I'm, I'm waiting on an answer from, just, I want to understand if any of those funds are either about to run out of money, or we were projecting soon to have to raise fees, and then I'd want to separate that funds discussion.
Mr. Skouski.
None of the funds are in immediate jeopardy of other additional unplanned increases. We had brought through inflation-based rate increases for all of the funds as part of the last budget process. I hope that answers your question.
Additional comments, questions from council about the enterprise funds? Is there a motion? Councilmember Tyser, you want to venture into this one? You're unmuted.
Great. Mute, unmute. It's hard to keep track. I'd like to make a motion to approve the solid waste fund requests on page 124, to include the part-time position, the position allocation charges, the commercial front loader replacement, the recycling center semi-trailer, and the baler. And that would be my first motion, and then I'll do the other two separate, or the other three, the same way, so nobody gets confused.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyser. We've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wilson. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, on the water sewer fund, I would like to make a motion to approve operating request, add one part-time support services, add one full-time water construction backflow specialist, position allocation changes, waterline replacement, 335, 335,000, service truck replacement, one-time capital requests, interconnection improvements, water plant improvements, and well site improvements.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Tyser. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wilson. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously.
All right, stormwater fund. I would like to make a motion to approve position allocation changes, stormwater master project list, 550,000, large equipment replacement, 25,000.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Tyser. Do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Wilson. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion on fleet fund requests to approve the position change allocation, 27,788.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Tyser. Do we have a second?
My mic.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wilson. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously.
All right. Now, if we can, Mayor, I would like to go back to page 105 in the packet.
Okay, might I suggest, Councilmember Tyser, that you might want to make a motion on the reserve 458, reestablishing that?
I'm not sure why I would need to do that right now, but can you help me?
Well, basically, what we did was, Harpreet, maybe if you could help us with the motion on that, that we moved 458 out of capital and moved it into operating, and we need to move it back out of operating into capital, so that we are not operating based on our capital allocation or money. Harpreet, can you, I see confusion.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Can you help me with the, where is it? I'm looking, the 458 that we moved out of capital into operation?
Yes.
And we need a motion to move that back, correct?
Yes, you will need a motion to approve that.
Okay, what would you suggest that motion be?
That would be a motion to replenish the reserve funds that were used to balance the operating budget during the budget process, during the FY '21 budget process.
Councilmember Palermo.
So when I, when I looked at the October 26th work session, proposed budget, which is very similar to tonight, except, you know, the major change of the, the employee bonuses not being in there. And so same thing with the November 9th proposed budget that aligned actually with Councilman Tyser's first motion, spending the 1.2 million dollars from the, from the general fund and not being attached to CARES, as he had updated his, his motion. It was my, it was my understanding there was not, at that moment, 479 or whatever the number is. It was actually my understanding at that time that the, that, that basically that deficit, that exception of the 400 and something thousand was actually increasing based on the November, November 9th proposed budget and first motion. Harpreet, is that, is that accurate, or am I, am I reading, am I reading the November 9th project, proposed budget incorrectly?
Actually, I do not have the November 9th presentation in front of me right now. But if, during the committee meeting, if I remember correct, the amount was lower, because actually we did change some of our projections, especially on the sales tax, after the numbers had come in for the month of September because of the audit adjustments that were made, and our revenues had dropped significantly because the audit adjustments were over 200,000 for two months in a row. And that kind of dropped our projected numbers for sales tax. So, and, and also the property tax number, the reduction in the property tax went up from the original 500,000 that we had to up to 600,000. So that changed our numbers a little bit, and that had affected the replenishment of the reserves. So now, right now, based on all the adjustments that we made, and the funding that is available, we are able to replenish the 458,328 as, at this point in time.
Well, that.
Councilmember Palermo.
So that, so I, I know it's possible to make the motion tonight, and there's the available funds based on the information we have. But it was my understanding that November 9th, that was not the proposal in the, in the agenda packet. And so basically, I guess, I guess the reason I'm asking this is because I am certainly supportive and interested in replenishing the reserves. But I feel that's something that, that can and should wait until January, when we're looking at really the entire, entire budget. And so that, that's where I wanted to understand if there was a change in thought process between the November 9th meeting and proposed budget in that packet versus this one.
Okay. Yes.
May I comment? If you give me a few minutes, I can go back and look at the November 9th presentation, because I'm not sure what the amount was on that one. I just have to go back and look at it.
Well, and what I'd like to point out, that this, this was part of the original budget. In the, the budget book that we passed, we said we included the use of reserves to balance the operating budget. That's against our budget principles. The city budget principles dictate the general fund operating expenses are funded with operating reoccurring revenues. So what I want to do is to make that right again, because I don't want this council to be the council that has deviated from our budget principles and is using reserves to balance an operating budget. I was fine with it because we were going into COVID, and things were very uncertain. I was fine with it, because we were going into COVID and things were very uncertain, but I can tell you right now, I would not have supported doing this had it not been for entering into a pandemic. So I would like to put it back where it belongs in reserves and move forward, because we can't continue to fund operating with reserves. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and Harpreet, maybe this will help. The total remaining available was a deficit of 896,908. And when we spoke with Ryan, when I spoke with Ryan, Director Luckett earlier or last week, he had indicated that part of, part of that money that was going to support the deficit of 896 was funds that were about $4 million of funds that were available from after the audit. And so that's why it was confusing. It was very confusing to me, because in November 9th presentation, we were including new monies that were not previously included. And so maybe that's where Councilmember Palermo's question is, is stemming from. If you could comment to that.
I don't think I can comment on that aspect, because I'm not aware of that conversation. But what I can say is I just quickly looked at the presentation from November 9th, and that presentation did include the 458,328 dollars as being shown, being shown as replenished.
Councilmember Tizer.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think we all agree that we should replenish the fund, but I think it's an issue of fund accounting. I don't think it's an issue at this moment of, of cash. And without Director Luckett here to answer that question, unless there's some reason it has to be done tonight, I'd just assume do it with, with all of our other adjustments, with the understanding that all of us on council agree that it needs to be replenished.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I don't understand why it can't be done tonight, but I'll acquiesce.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Tizer.
Thank you. The next, the next item that I skipped over somewhat on purpose is on page 105 of the packet under the administration requests. And it was the 464,283 dollars of citywide facility maintenance. The question that I have on this, and I bet that some of us also have, is this is maintenance on exterior of buildings? And my, you know, the, I think we would all like to know how much of that can, you know, can wait? Or how much of that is health, safety kind of issues?
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. And I, and I am looking forward to Mr. Fisher's responses well. I just want to state that certainly, I support the full 464,000 dollars. It is important that our buildings are not falling apart. I find it hard to believe that it couldn't wait eight weeks. If, if Mr. Fisher shares specifically why that money can't, then, then I'm certainly all ears. But again, I, I support it, but I, I want to support it in eight weeks unless I'm, unless I'm hearing a certain portion of that money needs to be spent between now and mid-January.
Mr. Fisher.
Thank you. I don't, I don't have specific reasons for it to wait, other than we're wanting to get going on it, because it is exterior. Longer we wait, the more that it weathers. Whether we do it now, or whether we do it in eight weeks, I think it can be done. It's just maintenance that we don't want to defer any longer than we have to. When I talked with building operations, my, my comment was, one of those things that just absolutely need to be done, take cosmetics out of it, and what would need to be done. So that's why we focused on the exterior. So it's a lengthy list. I don't have all those projects in front of me. But if we still, if, if you're talking about going back and discussing it in a, in an upcoming meeting, I, I don't know that the, there's any, I can't give you any good reason to do it tonight, other than doing it in a, in a, when we have the meeting later on.
Let me say this. I think we're in a sad state of affairs if we can't take guidance from our management team on facilities maintenance. Maintenance is the most important thing we can do in this city. And we have to keep up with it. Everybody talks about sister cities being new and shiny and sparkly. Well, guess what? You know, we're old, we've got a lot of history, and our facilities are aging. And I think it's extremely important, and I go back to Giuliani's broken window theory. It's extremely important that we maintain our facilities. Now, if you are looking at this from a staff standpoint, if you can't commit to facilities maintenance tonight, they don't know if you can commit to it in six weeks, eight weeks, 12 weeks. I mean, what, that's the message we're sending here. And I am sorry, but I would absolutely support the 464,283 for facilities maintenance, because we can't continue to defer maintenance costs, period. And I don't understand why we would even need to defer this for eight weeks. It's paramount. Comments? Councilmember Tizer, are you willing to make a motion?
I'm sort of confused where the body is right now.
Well, you make a motion, and you'll find out soon enough.
All right. Let's, let's, let's move to approve the 464,283 and see what happens.
We've got a motion to approve by councilmember Tizer. Do we have a second? Second by councilmember Judy. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And we've got it unanimous.
Great job there, Mayor. And that leaves, I think, that leaves me with two items that are left. One is the employee compensation of $42,000. And the other is revisiting the arts fund number. Having said both of those things, I'm going to remove myself to the men's room for just a moment, and I'll be back.
Councilmember Judy has his hand up, so it's perfect timing.
Thanks. Anyway, to that point, having spoken to Commissioner or Director Leatherman and others, the 20,000 for the doors at the wrap is very important. When they cannot secure those doors, it's a safety issue. People could get in there and hide at night, steal stuff, et cetera. Especially now that we've broadcasted on this Zoom call. Come over and get our place. So I would recommend Councilman Tizer, when he gets back from the bathroom, that we pass that 20,000 for the doors. We can wait on the polls till January, but I, I would highly recommend that, since we've given up our secret.
Yes, Harpreet?
Ma'am, just to mention that we will also need to approve the expenditure adjustments and revenue adjustments that we proposed here in first quarter, because without approval, without approval of those, we won't be able to do any of these things.
Thank you. And is anyone willing to make that motion while Councilmember Tizer is absent? Councilmember Judy?
I'll make the motion to approve the, I believe it's $20,000 for the doors to be fixed, secure the property.
Okay, and Harpreet was just talking about, and that's why I thought you were going to make a motion on. Harpreet was just talking about the revenue adjustments that need to be made as a bookkeeping issue, so.
I can make that motion too.
Well, you already made a motion for the doors. See, we've got a motion for the doors at the Bill Johnson Community Activity Building. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Willsey. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it is Palermo, Judy, Hall, and Willsey. I'll note for the record that Councilmember Tizer hasn't rejoined us. There he is. And Councilmember Tizer, what you missed was, Councilmember Judy made a motion for the doors, the 20,000 at Bill Johnson Activity Center. He had a second by Councilmember Willsey. All those in favor were Willsey, Hall, Judy, and Palermo, all opposed. Is Councilmember Zapata. And I'm sorry you were in the restroom.
No worries. I'm sure that I'll be marked in the minutes as such. See how much fun we can have with the budget? Go ahead. I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, I cut in on somebody else's time.
Well, no, do you, are you ready to, let me say this. Harpreet had made the comment before, while you were gone, that we need to do a revenue adjustment in order for all of these things to take place. So, Harpreet, do you have a recommended motion on that?
So, ma'am, the recommended motion on that could be motion to approve all the revenue and expenditure adjustments as part of the first quarter budget amendment.
Thank you. Is anyone willing to make that motion, Councilmember Tizer?
Harpreet, that's page 99 and page 100.
Sir, I do not have the agenda packet, but on the slides, let me see.
That one.
So that is slide number five and six on the presentation.
And while, Councilmember Palermo?
Yes, so, of course, no, no questions or concerns regarding slide five. Totally trust your, your judgment there. My, my concern with the expenditures aspect is regarding education and training. Obviously, as, as this council is aware, and was a four-three vote earlier in the year, I felt we really should, should greatly reduce the, the travel, and, and certainly a greater level than this. But also, my concern is, within the actual annual budget, travel is, and, and training, so education slash training and travel are two separate line items. And we get the information for the entire year, not just in six-month periods. So I guess basically, what I'd want to understand is how much of that one time is education and training versus how much of that one time is travel? And then also, I guess that, that's, that's it for now. We'll have more discussed later, but that's, that's where my one, one hesitation and question was there.
Harpreet?
Yes, so if, if you give me a few minutes, Councilmember Palermo, I'll just give you the the breakdown between the education and training and travel.
Councilmember Tizer.
Yeah, I was just, yep. There you go. I was just going to suggest that if that line item was an issue, we could strike that line item and approve the rest of it. On the other hand, while she looks at that, it does reduce that whole capital.
I'm just looking at it, and I'm thinking, is, does Councilmember Palermo recommend that we don't decrease it by 161,200? It can always be decreased more later. Councilmember Tizer?
Councilmember Palermo, do you want to wait for the answer, or what would you, what would you propose we do here?
I think Harpreet.
Harpreet has the answer.
So the breakdown of that 161,200 approximately is, for travel, it is 87,000. And for education and training, it is 74,200. And this is just for the first six months of the fiscal year, not the, the other half. That other half will be presented during the next round.
Councilmember Tizer?
Motion to approve the items on page 99 and 100 of the packet, otherwise known as the summary of recommended revenue adjustments to the general fund and summary of expenditure adjustments.
We've got a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Willsey. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Are we ready to move on? Is there anything else, Councilmember Tizer? You're keeping tally.
There are two items left. The first is the 40, Harpreet, help me, 42,41,000 of comp adjustments for those over 100,000, of which I believe there are 21 employees.
Yes, sir.
And is that, it's 41, correct? I'm flipping through the pages very quickly.
42. 36.
So it's slide number 26.
42, isn't it?
46,000.
Thank you. 46,000. So to get that to people by Christmas, can we do that? And if so, I would move to approve.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. Didn't we approve on some of the funds? Same compensation, like 1,500, 500, employee compensation, one-time payout. Is it the same thing?
No.
Employee compensation with the bottoms? Because they came from different funds, the other rest, 42, came from the general fund. And the rest is coming from different funds, right?
Councilmember Tizer.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Zapata, we excluded those when we approved the amounts in the enterprise funds. And so we now see them on page 26 as a separate set of items.
Councilmember Palermo.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor Henry. So obviously, our, all of our Roswell City staff members work very hard, including obviously, our, all our ones that make above $100,000 a year. That being said, you know, first off, as everybody's aware, that is, that is much higher than Roswell's median income. So meaning that, that is a salary that's much higher than most people that live in Roswell. More, more importantly, we have, we have frankly, our, our first responders that are being underpaid. We have, we have pay discrepancies and issues that, that really result in police officers getting paid hourly, that take on more responsibility. getting paid less than their colleagues that take on less responsibility. And that is a, that is a pay issue that we have not resolved. So although, although I'd love to give everybody a bonus, as we know in the, in the corporate world and in just really the private sector, this has been a very tough year with COVID. And there's been many that have not got bonuses. There's been many that have actually frankly had to take pay decreases. And unfortunately, as we know, there's been people that have lost their jobs or, or lost hours, et cetera. So when we have, when we have such limited funds who, to really be giving bonuses to those making above a hundred thousand dollars, I just don't see that as an urgent priority. And especially knowing that we have so many different ways where our residents really want us, I believe, want to see our first responders get paid properly. I'm optimistic and hopeful that will finally happen in January. But frankly, I would much rather have happened, it happened in June and they could have been getting really the second half of this year with their pay corrected. I certainly would rather see it happen today than, uh, than in January. Because I, I think that would be a great, uh, I know they got their bonus for, uh, prior, prior to the holidays, but I would still rather see them actually get an, an ongoing, ongoing pay raise. And again, knowing that we have transportation issues that we're not currently funding yet. We have economic development, which our residents desperately want to see us bring economic development to the east side, to the west side, all over. Do it, you know, really just the way that we see Alpharetta doing it, Milton doing it. That's something that's proposed here in number four. And so to see this as a priority is something that I certainly, uh, feel is just, is frankly not responsible in, in such a tough year. And again, it goes back to not only is a hundred thousand dollars well above the, uh, Roswell median household income. It's also something where, where frankly, at the top of the house, those are the, those are, that includes a lot of employees that do have, um, roles where there's the opportunity to occasionally work from home. There's the opportunity to not necessarily need to be on the front lines, the way that our first responders are. And frankly, even the way that our, our, uh, our individuals that work in solid waste and that are actually there, you know, picking up, picking up, uh, trash on Friday morning, you know, the day after Thanksgiving, et cetera. So again, clearly, clearly I'm, I'm opposed to this, given such a, uh, such a tight year with, uh, with so many cutbacks that Roswell residents as well as the city has had to make. Um, I just wanted to state that, uh, my, my opposition and that I'll be voting against this.
And I would like to say a couple of things. One is we've got a compensation study coming forward in the very near future. And I think that's when we start discussing, uh, salaries. And, um, we had already addressed the compression issue with our police department. Um, we, yes, we have addressed, don't say no, we have addressed it. Um, and we will continue to move forward when we receive the information on the compensation study. I would also like to say that while I was in here, the two months that City Hall was closed, I can tell you who was in this building. And they were our department heads, the leader of this city. And if you don't think that they played a direct role in keeping this city on track, providing excellent services and, yes, being on the front lines, you are sorely mistaken because I was in here with them. They were working very, very hard because it was their responsibility to make sure that all of our citizens' needs were met. And I think that they all did a great job with that. Councilmember Judy.
Uh, well, you know, there was a lot of headlines in that talk that we just ha- listened to and, and I agree with a lot of it. I mean, I think our first responders should be paid top of the line. And, um, I definitely agree in January, that's what we should do when we have that conversation. I also agree that we need the economic structure. I also agree that our roads and transportation needs to be to, at the top of the level. But I also agree that to attract the best and the brightest and to keep the best and the brightest in the city of Roswell to service our citizens, we've got to treat them like the best and the brightest. And giving somebody a two-thousand-dollar raise for Christmas to a tune of less than fifty thousand dollars for this city is not a ton. You couldn't even pave a sidewalk for that. So try and compare that to taking care of our employees and recognizing what they've done during this year during COVID. It's not apples to apples. I agree with you on a lot of those things. And I will support those when they come, when we get more information on them and we've seen them two times or three times like we have seen this. But I can tell you something, I do support making sure that our employees that have been on the front lines during the COVID battle get recognized for the hard work they've done this year. And if we want to have the best and the brightest work here, we need to treat them right.
Councilmember Palermo.
When there was a four-three vote in June, I wish there was support to actually increase the compensation for our police officers. I wish there was, there was really support to actually pave more of our roads and support economic development. And, uh, and, and with that, again, it just comes to priorities. My, my priority since June has been increasing the compensation to our, our police officers because there is still the pay compression issue. It's public record, there's an Excel file that can always be requested. And, and this issue is real and we have the opportunity to resolve it. And also again, not only do most Roswell residents not make a hundred thousand dollars, as well as this being a tough year and, uh, with bonuses and everything else in the, in the private sector. Also, because these, because these, these Roswell staff members are working so hard and doing such a great job, in addition to getting the high compensation, in addition to having our incredible benefits program. We have a very expensive, very attractive benefits program regarding retirement and other aspects. Also, we have company car, um, support as well. And they, and they get to use that for work and doing a lot of work. So there's no question that is a, it's a, it's a work, um, item. But at the same time, it's a, it's a benefit that many, many in the private sector don't get. So again, it's, I, I, I would, I would definitely want to show the appreciation. At the same time, this is, this is taxpayers' money in a very tough year.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. I just, I just want to add that, um, I, I do work with the CARES Act in my, in my regular job. And the Treasury, the SBA and the Treasury have made a distinction of highly compensated employees of one hundred thousand dollars or more that, uh, there are caps and there are limits on loan sizing and limits on forgiveness. And that's the rec- the recognition is basically that these are highly compensated employees and the, the benefits are supposed to be passed down to the lower compensated employees. Everybody's working very hard, but it is a tough year. And in corporate America, most management, mo- most employees, um, have taken a pay cut. So, um, I, I cannot support the over a hundred thousand dollar employees. It's not to say that I don't appreciate everything that they do. I know they work hard, they work really hard. And, you know, we, when we do the compensation study and when we get back to normal next year, uh, perhaps we can address the highly compensated employees somehow then, but I can't support it now.
Additional comments from council? Councilmember Tyser, did you make a motion?
I, I honestly can't remember.
I can't.
So I'm, I'm, I'm.
Okay. I believe you did make a motion, but there was no second. Councilmember Judy, are you seconding? You're, uh, was that a yes? You're muted, you're muted.
If he has a motion on the floor to approve, I'll second that. If he doesn't, I'll make the motion.
I believe he does have a motion on the floor, so we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it's Willsey, Tyser, and Judy, all those opposed. Palermo, Zapata, and Hall, I'm in support of the motion. It passes. Next item.
Right, the, uh, first of all, I just, let me just say, because I didn't get a chance to, to mention this. Uh, I'm very interested in seeing both the comp study and the, uh, compression study that councilmember Palermo is talking about. Uh, um, and so in the next few weeks, I'd like to see that. Perhaps we could meet and you could, uh, walk me through that so I can understand it better. I think I would support it if I, if I really understood, um, what it looked like today. Uh, having said that, the last item I have is to, is I've been, is, is since, since we were asked to come back to it, uh, come back to the, uh, forty thousand dollar, uh, grant to the Arts Fund. So, uh, having been requested to do that, I'll make the motion and see what the vote is.
Okay, we've got a motion by councilmember Tyser. Councilmember Palermo.
I guess just clarifying question, and, and you might have said it, councilman Tyser, and I just didn't hear it. I remember earlier you discussed a forty thousand, you discussed as a compromise, just showing, uh, support for the, the, the Arts Fund, giving twenty thousand dollars to kind of help them towards January. Which, which is your motion?
Excuse me.
Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you, Mayor. Which would gain your support, councilmember Palermo?
I, I would support twenty.
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor. I would support twenty thousand dollars tonight. Again, I, it, it, I, it trouble, it, it troubles me just purely because there's so many other priorities I want to support tonight. But at the same time, knowing they want to send out an RFP and knowing that, that I would hope showing the twenty thousand dollars of support tonight would just, just hope, uh, hopefully kind of get them some more, uh, support responses and hopefully fundraising. I, I would support that amount tonight.
Councilmember Willsey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And just another point of clarification, um, it was mentioned that this, that they would be a month behind. Um, it's actually much more than a month behind if we did not address this again for another two months. Um, they're already two to three months behind. So when the, uh, existing sculptures leave in February, March, it would be, you know, late summer, um, at least before they would be replaced. Um, I'm not sure that the twenty thousand commitment and confidence right now would be enough. Um, but it's certainly a start. So just, uh, wanted to put that out there. Um, I just, I hope that between now and then, that, uh, you can get the answers that you need from the Arts Fund and go and get this in, and learn of the support from the community to help get the full support.
Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you, Mayor. With, with, with that, uh, comment from councilmember Willsey, I would move to, uh, grant, uh, the twenty thousand dollars at this, at this time, uh, to the Arts Fund with the knowledge that we will be reviewing the other twenty thousand with our January update.
We've got a motion, councilmember Zapata. Did you want a second or do you have a comment?
I have a comment.
Please.
Oh, thank you. So I mean, if you're going to approve that, just approve the forty thousand because you know that they, I mean, if you're going to approve in six weeks, just do it now. I mean, what is the point? And give them the funds that they need to move forward.
Well, we've got a, a motion. Um, did we have a second on it? No second?
I second the motion.
Can we amend the motion?
We, we can get back to that. So we've got a motion, we've got a second. Is anyone interested in light of councilmember Zapata's comments, uh, amending their motion? Councilmember Tyser.
If someone else is interested, br- bring it forward. I, I'm trying to get some consensus here. So if, 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 you know, uh, that's important to me.
I would support amending the motion as, uh, councilmembers Zapata suggested.
Okay, so you want to make another motion?
Or to amend the motion that's on the floor? Uh, with councilmembers Zapata's suggestion.
Okay, so your motion would be for the forty thousand?
Correct.
And do we have a second? Second by councilmember Judy. Okay, so.
Now what?
Okay. Okay, so we'll vote on the amended motion first, which would be, um, councilmember Willsey's motion with councilmember Judy's second. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it, it's Willsey and Judy and I think Tyser's confused. I'm not sure if that was a vote or.
I, I, I'll vote for it because I don't know what we're doing here. But go ahead. Finish it up.
Okay, so. Uh, all those opposed, I'm sorry, I've, all those opposed are Hall, Zapata, and Palermo. And I'll support the motion. So it passes. And, um, councilmember Zapata, I'm really confused why you would suggest something like that and then not support it. But that's neither here nor there. Um, so, yes. Harpreet.
Ma'am, we also need, uh, a vote or an approval of the capital project list. That is on, I think, uh, pages, uh, one thirty, okay, where is that? That is towards the end of your packet, basically.
Capital projects, I think it's on thirty-six.
Yes, so that is slide nine.
And thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
Yes, thirty-six to thirty-eight, that's correct.
Yes, councilmember Palermo.
And I guess I, I just, I want to understand what action tonight, uh, or what concerns by not having action tonight and waiting till January. I just want to understand kind of which, what projects are at risk and, and how.
So, um, so this is basically funding the capital projects that were already approved. These are already approved projects. It's just that we had frozen the funding on some of these capital projects, either completely or partially. Uh, and, um, the, the list that you have in your packets proposes unfreezing some of the amounts uh, on some of the projects. Uh, like for instance, in Comde, you have the historic district, uh, property mapping. Uh, we need to unfreeze that amount and maybe, uh, Lenore could speak more on that because they need the funding. It's also a timing issue for the departments in terms of, uh, the requirement for the funding on some of these capital projects. That's why we are recommending unfreezing some of these. And then there is also the funds, uh, that we have reallocated, the, uh, funds that is the one million eighty-eight thousand, which is going towards, uh, funding the capital projects that you'll have approved, some of, some of which you'll have approved tonight. So that's why we need a vote on this as well.
Additional questions from council? Councilmember Tyser.
Yes, I think, my question is, which one of these fits into the criteria of health, safety, or contractual?
Oh. Let's see. So I don't think if we go by the criteria, I, 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 I'm not sure because for that, it would be the ADA compliance facilities and administration, the thirteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-four. Then, uh, the citywide facilities maintenance, unfreezing the two hundred and ninety-five thousand, six-ten that carried forward from the pri- prior year. Uh, and then in Comde, uh, they need the two hundred thousand for the historic district property map, uh, to go, to carry forward with that particular project. They also need the twenty thousand unfrozen for the comp plan, uh, for the, um, for the portion that was approved for, uh, the, uh, the equity study. Uh, and then uh, we have the fire station five remodel, the forty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-five that is needed by them. Uh, and then, uh, we have the three thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine for the landscape improvement plan, which is basically to make some payments, uh, on some work that has been, uh, done or needs to get done. And then we have the Old Mill Park Trail Wall, uh, which needs to be done as well. That's the two hundred and fifty-five thousand in Greckan Parks. So those are important. And then on the next page, uh, we have the sidewalk connectivity. We are, uh, recommending partially, uh, unfreezing two hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars of the, uh, eight hundred and thirty-five, six-twenty that was frozen earlier. And then, um, and then we have the nineteen thousand, three hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-three. And then we have the nineteen thousand three hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-three thousand for the Woodstock Road at Highway ninety-two Turn Lane Project. That's another partial unfreeze amount that we need. And then, of course, we need all the projects, the allocation of all the, reallocation of all the projects that you see in column, in the column that is titled "Reallocate Amount."
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you. So I, I feel like I do see some, I was paying attention to just the column of unfreeze amount following along. It seems, it seems to me like there could potentially just be some benefits to unfreezing tonight. However, the reallocating, I guess, where I'm not clear, Harpreet, is are you saying there's a specific urgency that it needs, money needs to be reallocated tonight, or is that something that could wait until January?
No, sir, that needs to be approved tonight, and those are basically projects that have either been completed or, or have come in below the budget, the approved budget. And we are reallocating those funds towards other projects that you have already approved right, right now.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Can I just give some clarification on the Old Mill Park Trail Wall? Is that the area that was being developed by, by Mr. Reddick, in, that, that's a different wall?
Yeah, this is above the Old Mill Machine Shop. It's the hillside that supports the walkway that comes down from the parking lot. We rebuilt the lower portion of the wall under an emergency contract order, I don't know, about six months ago or so. And this funds the upper portion of that wall. And the concern is, is that through ongoing rain and weathering, we have a potential for failure of that section of the hillside.
Thank you.
Additional comments, questions from council?
Yeah, hold on just a second, I'm having some technical difficulties here. Okay.
Councilmember Tizer.
Thank you. So if I understand this right, the, the items in the reallocate amount are, are areas where we were better than the amount we've, we, we budgeted, and so we're just taking those back into the capital projects fund, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
So does anyone see any reason why we shouldn't do that? So, then I want to add, okay, so, so I'm prepared, I'm prepared to do that. Depending on. I think we can, I think we can do that with the grand total, if I've got that right. That I can, we can make a motion that, that would say that we would reallocate the items listed on these pages totaling one zero two nine eight eight zero. Would that be correct?
Sir, it would be the one zero eight eight zero eight three, right below that, if you go down.
Ah, because you've got some completed projects. Thank you. Thank you. Then, then I'm gonna need some help from, from, from my colleagues. The unfreeze amount, I'm a little confused on, because none of these projects are actually frozen. Because the freeze ended.
Yes, sir, so the freeze ended on September thirtieth. So we said, okay, once it ends, we will bring it back, we will take it back to Mayor and Council at that point in time, and figure out, to see how we are doing in terms of our revenues and expenditures. And then if we need to continue to freeze on some of these projects, we will continue to freeze them. So if you approve that tonight, so the freeze will continue up until January the thirtieth for the amounts that you see in the freeze amount column.
If we approve the reallocate amount, because that's just available money for later, there's no reason to not, of one oh eight eight zero eight three, and we do nothing on the unfreeze account, amount, column, what happens, Harpreet?
So if you do not approve anything in the unfreeze amount column, so, and let's see, so, so since the original resolution expired on September thirtieth, so then all those projects will be unfrozen.
Right.
Yeah.
That's my thought. So, council members, what would you like to do?
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, just had to find my mouse again. Just a clarification, the unfreeze, or, I'm sorry, the reallocation amount, we've already spent in what we just approved earlier, the million eighty-eight oh eight three. That's where the money came from, if I understand, Harpreet, is that correct? When we approved the four sixty-four two eighty-three for facilities maintenance and all those things?
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions, comments from council? Do we have a motion? Councilmember Tizer, are you thinking or talking stuff?
I'm actually speaking on mute.
Thank you.
A motion to approve the reallocation of the one zero eight eight zero eight three as recommended by staff.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Tizer, do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Judy, all those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Okay, Harpreet, do you have everything you need from us?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Councilmember Tizer, do you have anything on the, the rest of your tickler list there?
I do not, I'd be ready to call item four when you are.
And Councilmembers Zapata, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank, so are we covering all the items from this list, or we still have some items like the, I don't know. Like the Mowen Machine, or are you, do we cover every single item from here now, since we've been jumping around?
Councilmember Tizer, would you like to answer that?
We covered all the items which I thought this council thought were critical and could not wait until January.
Okay, yes, Councilmembers Zapata?
You're gonna make a motion to defer the rest?
That's an excellent question.
Is there a motion to defer what we did not address?
Motion to defer the remainder that we have not addressed, thank you, Councilmembers Zapata.
There's a motion to defer, do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Judy. You're really trying to trick me, Councilmembers Zapata, you keep coming up with these suggestions, and then you don't vote for them. So, all those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. We are gonna take a fifteen-minute break before we go, move on to item number four.
Oh, the tires are away. Soon as we get a couple more people on board here. Okay, we've got a forum. Okay, so we're gonna move on to item number four. Alterations to the existing FY 2021 budget. Requested by Councilmember Hall, Palermo, and Zapata. Who wants to present? Councilmember Palermo.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor Henry. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to just read each item. And then at the mayor's preference, if you prefer, I want to open it up to any questions. I know, I think I heard a council member and maybe the mayor say there were one or two that might have had some questions on. So I'd love to read through each one, maybe give one clarifying sentence, open it up for any questions or discussion. Certainly from any and all on council, the mayor, etc., and obviously the public. And then, as I've mentioned, I'm supportive of moving toward to January. And then again, at the same time, if there's a majority that has any of these items, they'd want to move forward to tonight, I'm certainly supportive of that. These are all items that I feel should move forward ASAP. But again, my goal is to get these things to pass and bring these improvements for taxpayers. And if that means waiting to January, then I'm certainly supportive. Does that work, Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Palermo, what we'll do is listen to your entire list, and then I'll open it up for council questions, comments, and concerns, and we'll go from there.
Perfect. Thank you. So item number one, add compensation correction for police. And so I'm actually not going to read the... Is it possible, Mayor, is it possible to pull up, to have somebody just show this list, just so they can see it while I'm saying it, if that's okay?
Let me see. We can... Who can pull it up? Marley, does Marley have it? She would have it, right?
It's in the agenda pack. I just figured that way I don't have to read each dollar amount, etc.
Yeah, no, we'll get it on the screen. Just give us a minute.
Sure, appreciate it.
Marley's on it.
Perfect, thank you. So I will get started while she pulls that up. So item number one, add the compensation correction for police. And so this refers to the fact that there's, obviously, there's been retention recruitment challenges. But specifically, really most focused on the fact that looking for a number of officers to take on additional responsibility and get promotions. And not really feeling motivated, given some compensation issues that we have. And again, I'm certainly happy to share the Excel and discuss in greater detail between now and January. And certainly, I think, a valuable discussion, just to make sure that we are supporting our first responders out there on the first line. And so even though a number of them are in "management roles," they still are having their shifts out, you know, on patrol the entire time, etc. So that's item number one. Item number two, adding a head of economic development within City Hall, so that City Council can officially be providing direction and creating accountability for economic development. This is replicating a model that currently exists in both Alpharetta and Milton, among other places. And so this is a role that I certainly support. It's one that I foresee really partnering with Roswell Inc. and working well with the council, legal departments, ComDav, etc. Item number three, add three full-time station captain positions. And so this is one where the unfunded request from the fire department was for 21, so that there could be a full-time captain in every shift in every station. I'd love to provide 21. I'd really appreciate it if this council can help increase that number from three to be a greater number. But ultimately, with the current budget and the money available, I think three is something realistic that I'm hoping we can gain support for. Item number four, so this is something that was unanimously supported by City Council. So King Road, where the Roswell High School is, basically, it's two lanes when you turn on from Crossville. And basically, it very quickly bottlenecks into one lane. So what the City Council approved with RDOT was that we would actually extend that second lane up to the high school, as well as add a pedestrian refuge. And so based on that unanimous council approval, that was a request from staff that went unfunded this budget year. And so hoping we can do that to really improve transportation, as well as safety, right there in front of the high school, in front of Roswell High School on King Road. Item number five, there had been discussion, I think, a number of different times by some council members, really looking at how we're supporting Roswell businesses and really supporting economic development. So this is something where, as we look to hire a head of economic development, we also look to really provide a budget that really is going to help support Roswell businesses as well. So that's item number five. Item number six, just like some other ones you saw, so basically, one, two, three, and now six were items that were discussed during the annual budget and didn't have support then. But item number six is Mimosa Hall, taxpayers purchased for $3 million, probably back in, at least two years ago or so. And still, residents are not allowed to walk on the property on any given day. And the goal here is to really fund, to make it safe, and just really finding that bare minimum safety, so that residents can use this outdoor park, as more people are looking to get outside during COVID. Item number seven, another transportation improvement. So Woodstock Road at 92 Turn Lane, you saw there was, related to a project, there was some money being unfrozen. Basically, this was a staff request at the beginning of this budget year, that staff request went unfunded. So this is a request to fund that. Basically, I believe discussion for this started before we even knew there might be a middle school on Woodstock Road. But given there'll be a middle school right there, certainly beneficial to be proactive and really work on this lane improvement at Woodstock Road at 92, next to the Bank of America. Item number eight, this was an unfunded staff request in this quarterly budget review at Historic House Properties Maintenance. So that's an item that Mr. Leatherman can answer any questions that you might have on that one. Item number nine, basically, as this council is fully aware, and we heard a lot of discussion for tonight during open-mic night, that really, I believe, and certainly appreciate Councilmember Hall and Councilmember Zapata bringing this up and supporting this as well. But basically, to fund proactive mitigation, to help ensure that we are protecting the neighborhoods that are impacted by GDOT's project. And that's something I think really should be a best practice, that we do anytime there's a GDOT update going on, make sure that we're really protecting and benefiting Roswell residents. And this is a very relevant time with that express lane project. So that is item number nine, to fund that mitigation plan. Item number 10, we had already discussed at length, Roswell Arts Fund, and they got $40,000, so that's not on here, or no need to discuss that. And so those were all the ads that we'd like to discuss in January. And again, any that there's support for tonight, we'd definitely love to support tonight as well. But again, I appreciate the opportunity for a full public discussion. And then as for deletes, the majority, if not, the strong majority of these were all ones that were proposed at the annual budget, so you might remember some of them. But some different numbers for some of them, like this one. So basically, we didn't know, frankly, I feel, back, you know, when we were doing the budget, we didn't fully know how bad COVID was going to be. And so with that, we had the second highest travel budget in the history of Roswell. This goal, we did slightly reduce it tonight. This goal is to reduce it even further. So this number would have to be reduced. But ultimately, we're seeing a lot of corporations that are not going to be traveling until July 1st. July 1st is the next budget year, so we do think there's good reason to greatly reduce the general fund aspect of the travel budget. Keeping in mind, there are still some other funds that do support travel. Item number 12 is basically, the annual budget has a consultation fee for a CEO for Mimosa Hall. And keeping in mind that the inside is unfunded, it didn't seem necessary to spend the $90,000 for a CEO when we don't even have the funding to really do the inside. We want to focus on the outside, at least first. Item number 13 is a proposal for a cut. It's basically, the annual budget that was approved has discretionary funds for consultants, but there's no need that currently exists. So given the tough year financially, I think it would make sense to not have discretionary funds, and anything needed could certainly be approved by mayor and council. Item number 14 is reducing the education budget. And again, that was separate from what was done today, so therefore, this number, we might want to reassess, given the fact that we did slightly cut it already today, but that's number 14. Number 15 is reducing the car fund. There have been some cars purchased or approved for purchase over the years, where I think it'd be very valuable for us as a city and just for taxpayers to see, of doing really a little more of just a clear inventory of, here's the exact amounts of cars, uses, costs, etc. But I think within that car fund, there's the opportunity for at least $40,000. There's an item for closure, which we can certainly discuss in closure. Item number 17 is really just a transfer. That ultimately, the November 9th-proposed budget involved $1.2 million being spent purely from general fund allocation. The original motion was then amended to be changed, to ensure that came from CARES Fund. So that's a $1.2 million there. And then number 18 is transferring funds to the reserve, and we can certainly discuss really the number and get into those details. But those are the different 18 items. Would love the opportunity to discuss any
Marley's Fund.
Perfect, thank you. So I will get started whilst you pull that up. So item number one, add the compensation correction for police. And so this refers to the fact that there's, obviously, there's been retention, recruitment challenges, but specifically really most focused on the fact that looking for a number of officers to take on additional responsibility and get promotions and not really feeling motivated, given some compensation issues that we have. And again, I'm certainly happy to share the Excel and discuss in greater detail between now and January and certainly, I think, a valuable discussion, just to make sure that we are supporting our first responders out there on the first line. So even though a number of them are in "management roles", they still are having their shifts out, you know, on patrol the entire time, etc. So that's item number one. Item number two, adding a head of economic development within City Hall so that City Council can officially be providing direction and creating accountability for economic development. This is replicating a model that currently exists in both Alpharetta and Milton, among other places. And so this is a role that I certainly support. It's one that I foresee really partnering with Roswell Inc. and working well with the council, legal departments, comdat, etc. Item number three, add three full-time station captain positions. And so this is one where the unfunded request from the fire department was for 21 so that there could be a full-time captain in every shift and every station. I'd love to provide 21. I'd really appreciate it if this council can help increase that number from three to be a greater number. But ultimately, with the current budget and the money available, I think three is something realistic that I'm hoping we can gain support for. Item number four, so this is something that was unanimously supported by City Council. So King Road, where the Roswell High School is, basically, it's two lanes when you turn on from Crossville and basically very quickly bottlenecks into one lane. So what the City Council approved with RDOT was that we would actually extend that second lane up to the high school, as well as add a pedestrian refuge. And so based on that unanimous council approval, that was a request from staff that went unfunded this budget year. And so hoping we can do that to really improve transportation, as well as safety, right there in front of the high school, in front of Roswell High School on King Road. Item number five, there had been discussion, I think, a number of different times by some council members, really looking at how we're supporting Roswell businesses and really supporting economic development. So this is something where, as we look to hire a head of economic development, we also look to really provide a budget that really is going to help support Roswell businesses as well. So that's item number five. Item number six, just like some other ones you saw. So basically, one, two, three, and now six were items that were discussed during the annual budget and didn't have support then. But item number six is Mimosa Hall, taxpayers purchased for $3 million, probably back in at least two years ago or so. And still, residents are not allowed to walk on the property on any given day. And the goal here is to really fund, to make it safe, and just really finding that bare minimum safety so that residents can use this outdoor park as more people are looking to get outside during COVID. Item number seven, another transportation improvement. So Woodstock Road at 92 Turn Lane, you saw there was, related to a project, there was some money being unfrozen. Basically, this was a staff request at the beginning of this budget year. That staff request went unfunded, so this is a request to fund that. Basically, I believe discussion for this started before we even knew there might be a middle school on Woodstock Road. But given there'll be a middle school right there, certainly beneficial to be proactive and really work on this lane improvement at Woodstock Road at 92, next to the Bank of America. Item number eight, this was an unfunded staff request in this quarterly budget review at Historic House Properties Maintenance. So that's an item that Mr. Leatherman can answer any questions that you might have on that one. Item number nine, basically, as this council is fully aware, and we heard a lot of discussion for tonight during open-mic night, that really, I believe and certainly appreciate Councilmember Hall and Councilmember Zapata bringing this up and supporting this as well. But basically, to fund proactive mitigation, to help ensure that we are protecting the neighborhoods that are impacted by GDOT's project. And that's something I think really should be a best practice that we do. Anytime there's a GDOT update going on, make sure that we're really protecting and benefiting Roswell residents. And this is a very relevant time with that express lane project. So that is item number nine, to fund that mitigation plan. Item number 10, we had already discussed at length, Roswell Arts Fund, and they got $40,000. So that's not on here, or no need to discuss that. And so those were all the ads that we'd like to discuss in January. And again, any that there's support for tonight, we'd definitely love to support tonight as well. But again, I appreciate the opportunity for a full public discussion. And then as for deletes, the majority, if not, the strong majority of these were all ones that were proposed at the annual budget, so you might remember some of them. But some different numbers for some of them, like this one. So basically, we didn't know how, frankly, I feel, back, you know, when we were doing the budget, we didn't fully know how bad COVID was going to be. And so with that, we had the second highest travel budget in the history of Roswell. This goal, we did slightly reduce it tonight. This goal is to reduce it even further. So this number would have to be reduced. But ultimately, we're seeing a lot of corporations that are not going to be traveling until July 1st. July 1st is the next budget year, so we do think there's good reason to greatly reduce the general fund aspect of the travel budget. Keeping in mind, there are still some other funds that do support travel. Item number 12 is basically, the annual budget has a consultation fee for a CEO for Mimosa Hall. And keeping in mind that the inside is unfunded, it didn't seem necessary to spend the $9,000 for a CEO when we don't even have the funding to really do the inside. We want to focus on the outside at least first. Item number 13 is a proposal for a cut. It's basically, the annual budget that was approved has discretionary funds for consultants, but there's no need that currently exists. So given the tough year financially, I think it would make sense to not have discretionary funds and anything needed could certainly be approved by mayor and council. Item number 14 is reducing the education budget. And again, that was separate from what was done today. So therefore, this number, we might want to reassess, given the fact that we did slightly cut it already today. But that's number 14. Number 15 is reducing the car fund. There have been some cars purchased or approved for purchase over the years where I think it'd be very valuable for us as a city and just for taxpayers to see of doing really a little more of just a clear inventory of, here's the exact amounts of cars, uses, costs, etc. But I think within that car fund, there's the opportunity for at least $40,000. There's an item for closure, which we can certainly discuss in closure. Item number 17 is really just a transfer. That ultimately, the November 9th-proposed budget involved $1.2 million being spent purely from general fund allocation. The original motion was then amended to be changed to ensure that came from CARES Fund. So that's a $1.2 million there. And then number 18 is transferring funds to the reserve. And we can certainly discuss really the number and get into those details. But those are the different 18 items. Would love the opportunity to discuss any of these tonight and of course, in more detail at a work session and eventual votes in late January.
Councilmember Judy.
As I said to you today, there's probably 12 to 16 of these that I could support in some way, shape, or fashion, you know? So I don't think these are that far off at 12:15 tonight with a couple lengthy things ahead of us and more to learn with the big picture of what this looks like in the big picture and to have the chance to talk to a few of the department heads on some of these. I think I could get very close, and I don't see a lot of this that is, jumps out at me, is maybe a couple things. But the rest doesn't jump out at me as objectionable. So I look forward to going through this process and then looking at this hard for January 23rd meeting and hopefully a work session before that.
Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank my fellow council members. Thank you, Mayor, for putting this process together. I think we're on a great track here, and I look forward to discussing these between now and January. And I would agree, a lot of these I can sign on. Some of these I would actually like to fund more. And we can certainly talk about those.
Councilmember Willsey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mike. I think we had a nice conversation last week about these items, and I just had some questions. I wanted to get a little bit more detail on them. But I think there's some great ideas here, and I think most of them align with the strategic plan. So I feel confident we'll have some really strong productive discussions in January.
Additional comments? Oh, yes, Councilmembers Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, you can see, all of them are self-explanatory. They're very clear. They speak by themselves. It's just if you believe on that, you vote on that and move them forward. Some of them, I recognize them from back in, before June. We've been talking about some of them for a while, so now maybe six months at least. So they speak by themselves. We've been talking about them before June 2020. So we just need to vote on them. So I'm counting with my fellow council members to, seems like they like the ideas, to just vote on them and move them forward and not just talk about them. So hopefully in January, we'll can get all of them, hopefully, or some of them, rolling. If they are important for my fellow council members like they are for me, we can make this happen. And so we'll have to continue talking about them and not do anything. Thank you.
Additional comments from council? I don't see any hands up. So thank you. And Councilmember Palermo, are you going to make a motion?
Motion to defer to the January 23rd? Motion, is it 23rd? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to defer until January 23rd? Do we have a second? It looks like we've got a couple of seconds, or are there clarifying questions? Or we've got two seconds by Councilmember Tyser and Councilmember Zapata? Oh, Councilmember Zapata apparently has a question.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor. You have a question. So are you planning to bring this to the same work session that we're going to discuss the budget? Since these are all budget items, I think that will make sense. I don't know if you want to include this in your motion.
The only person that calls for a work session is the mayor, and I'll determine when we're going to have that. Councilmember Palermo.
I'm definitely aware of that fact. I would like, just to give that clarity and hope to get a unanimous vote here, I'd like to amend the motion to say I would like to defer this to the January 23rd regularly scheduled mayor and council meeting and for these to be included if there ends up being any budget work session discussion prior. Does that work, Mayor?
Well, you can say it. So your wishes are known. That won't make it happen, but I'm just saying, yes. So you made it clear. Councilmember Tyser?
You're mute.
I'm seconding his amended motion.
Okay. So we've got a motion by Councilmember Palermo. We've got a second by Councilmember Tyser. All of those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. Next, we're on to community development. Councilmembers Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, item number five, approval of the request to rezone 20195129 from RS30, single-family suburban, to CIV, civic and institutional, located at 615 and 635 Henry Road for future development. This item was deferred by mayor and council at the March 9, 2020 meeting, the October 13, 2020 mayor and council meeting, and the November 9, mayor and council meeting.
Mr. Stibbe, will you take it away?
Morning, Mayor and Council. Let me show a screen here. All right. So, as stated, this is 615 and 635 Henry, request to rezone from RS30 to Civic. Councilmember Zapata listed the background, but as you know, it was really just submitted in December of last year and went through a process, was deferred on March 9 of this past year. Again, at the October 13 meeting, at a neighborhood meeting with the neighbors on October 27, then deferred by council on November 9. Here's the location, aerial of the property. It is zoned RS30. There is Civic to the right, which is the existing church, and the PRD to the north. This is the proposed new plan that was submitted to us after the last meeting. It has reduced the square footage. Here's the basics. The square footage was reduced from 69,000 square feet to 48,000 square feet for a total of a 21,000 square foot reduction. The parking has been reduced from 167 spaces to 142 spaces. The plan currently has 40-foot buffers, and there's underground detention. So they have a 40-foot buffer along the side here, 40-foot buffer all around here, 40-foot buffer here, underground detention here. The buildings have shrunk. Like I said, the total square footage together is now at 48,000 square feet. The proposed new buildings are approximately around about 100 feet back from Henry Road. And they match the location of the existing buildings for the church. So if you take a look at this here, the existing building for the church is hard to tell because you can't see it technically, but the existing one sits right about here. So these are around about 100 feet back from Henry Road, to give you an example of where they are. The planning commission did recommend approval back in August, or back in September, I'm sorry. But that was a different plan, and they had two conditions at the time. Staff recommends approval with the November 19, 2020 plan, a combination plat. A daycare center is prohibited. However, a nursery for the church members is allowed. And then condition number four, for charitable items collected by the church and stored at the facility, example clothing, food items, etc., shall be delivered to the intended recipients on-site. On-site pickup is prohibited. So these conditions came from the applicant. So when the applicant speaks next, you'll see that they had several proposed conditions that they sent to you, plus a memo explaining everything that is currently at the site and the proposed buildings as well. The staff took the first four conditions from the applicant. Because conditions number five and six are code. Condition number five related to the tree protection requirements, which is already in Article 12 of the U-Defined Development Code. And condition number six, related to the final architectural design, has to be approved by the design review board, and that is already a requirement. So staff only recommended the first four. However, if the council so choose to, when the applicant is done with his presentation, if you want to add those other two conditions, you are fully welcome to do so. Do you have any questions for staff?
Yes, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Thank you, Jackie. I have a question, and I don't recall if it was depicted this way on the other plat, but there appear to be two driveways off of this property onto Henry Road. Is that a requirement to have two as opposed to one? Because I imagine there's going to be other interparcial connectivity as well.
So I think, let me go to the plan, and they do have an interparcial connection on the plan. So they're showing inner future connection here, but they do have two access points that are at 300 feet apart for separation. So transportation has approved the site plan as it has gone through. They have not indicated that two driveways wouldn't be an issue. But you are correct, they do show future connection right here, let me get the mouse, to right in this location.
So two driveways are not required by RDOT or any other code?
No, I believe not. I think they might have used these because there are two different parcels here at the moment, and each one had access. But there are not, two drivers are not required by code. I'm not sure that... I don't have anything that indicates why, or is Rob on there?
Jackie, if I can chime in for a second, a couple of things related to Councilmember Hall's question. First, their traffic study and every site plan that I've ever seen for this development has shown those two driveways. Their traffic study took the number of trips that there is generated and applied it across both of those driveways. Based on the number of trips, we would recommend those two connections, and we're very happy to see the interparcial connection over to the east.
Thank you.
Additional questions of staff? Not seeing any hands up. I'd like to hear from the applicant at this time.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I've got two screens working here. Let me get my volume up. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name's Din Webb, 1230 PC Street, Atlanta, Georgia, 30309. Here on behalf of St. Mary's Coptic Orthodox Church. As Jackie indicated, this is an application that's been before you several times, and it's getting late. So I'm going to skip the generalities of the proposal. But I want you to know that, you know, three weeks ago, we were listening. And we went back and rethought the project. We also took a hard look at the World Harvest application to understand the parameters that are acceptable to the city in the past. And as a result of all that, we've made some changes that Jackie covered. I think the obvious and most important one was to revise the building design. We've taken the two buildings and the square footage down about 30% or as she indicated, from 69,000 square feet to 48,000 square feet. And that's a square footage per acre that is comparable to what was approved for World Harvest. We also shrunk the building footprints, and I think that's important because we reduced the massing of those two buildings. Building number two, which is the westernmost building, went from a footprint of 17,000 square feet to 9,000 square feet. That's a 47% reduction. And the footprint for building number one went from 17,500 square feet to 13,200 square feet, which is a 25% reduction. And Jackie mentioned that we're set back about 100 feet from Henry Road. We're also set back, or the buildings are also set back about 100 feet on both the south and west sides as well from the property lines. She talked a little bit about the conditions we proposed. You know, we had offered to prohibit daycare use. That was something we'd seen or heard was a concern, and that's certainly no intent on this site. We'd also offered to prohibit a food pantry or food bank, as that term is understood. Somehow that crept into the conversation as well, and that was never the intent of the church. So we've offered a condition that makes that clear as well. Jackie mentioned that we had also proposed a condition that basically said we'd go for architectural review before the DRB. I recognize that's required, but we wanted to provide some additional comfort to folks who are interested in the issue of architecture, and we made a similar proposal regarding the tree ordinance as well. Lastly, we provide some clarity on the uses. I got the sense from the meeting three weeks ago that there was some ambiguity there. And so, you know, we prepared a memo based on an interview I conducted with Father Aliyah, who is the head religious at the school and some board members. And as I hope you understood, this expansion really is focused on providing additional facilities for the kids. There really is a great shortage of Sunday school space, and there's not enough activity space for the children. So that's really the primary driver here. I think I'll stop there. As you heard, we've had a recommendation of approval from both the staff and the planning commission for the larger project. We hope with the changes that we've made and the information we've provided, we'll have your support tonight as well. So we'd ask for your recommendation of approval, subject to the staff conditions. And I'm happy to take any questions and preserve my time.
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. I really appreciate your involvement in this and really the, just the details you've provided. So as I've discussed in the past, you know, St. Mary's definitely great, you know, just members of our community and just really appreciate, you know, everything that they do. And I think you've brought things, it seems to me, like to a much closer spot. So what I want to kind of talk through is, I still have a few remaining concerns. I'm hoping we have the opportunity to resolve those tonight. I definitely appreciate your patience and St. Mary's patience, as it's been a long process. But luckily, they said they're always very patient in the long haul. So basically, what I shared was, my concern is that the request is to change this RS30, you know, really extremely residential-type zoning, to become civic. And my concern was certainly, the original proposal we saw, I felt, and I think you'd probably agree, you know, especially based on the significant changes, that it was not at all compatible with such a heavy residential area. And so I think there's great progress that's been made. I guess my concern is, or my hesitation, is 48,000 square feet in the drawing. It still looks like a big, really, a real big building that does have a different character as well as the, that was, let's see, for the two buildings, the total. And then even though the parking spots have gone down, it still will feel somewhat big as well. And so basically, what I'm wondering about is the opportunity where you have 40-foot buffers in there, which is something that's certainly available in the code. Again, I just have concern with it being such large buildings overall, total combined, as well as so many parking spots. I want to discuss really the opportunity to increase it. And I'm not looking or requesting to increase it as large as some had requested in the past, as you would have heard in some of the discussions. So not looking to go to a full 60 feet, but still just the opportunity to still increase it and really just ensure that there's some, just really trees, etc., to kind of really screen so that even though these large buildings and many parking spots have a much more intense use and really somewhat could change the character, by having a larger buffer and more screenings, I feel might kind of shield that concern. So what would be your responses or reaction to that overall?
Okay, I got a couple of thoughts. The 48,000 square feet, just to be clear, includes all the basement space as well. So that's not above gray. And of course, the two buildings will also be capped at a residential height. We did take a look at the buffer. I mean, I heard that comment the last time. You know, I noticed World Harvest did basically a 20-foot buffer. They chose a smaller with some plantings outside of it. And we couldn't make it work with 60 feet. But you know, what we probably could do, and I haven't had this conversation with the client, is plant it. And we couldn't make it work with 60 feet, but I, you know, what we probably could do, and I haven't had this conversation with the client is plant it. Um, you know. I think there's some, some opportunity to put the screening within the 40 feet, uh, but again, I'm kind of talking out of turn there to get the desired, uh, screening effect. Um, but my, you know, honestly, between. I'll just say, I mean, the fact is that that was the first thing I asked engineer to look at. And even though we reduced the square footages and even though we reduced the, the footprints, there were some restrictions there. But we felt like going to the largest buffer of the two options. You know, we would, you know, hopefully, uh, get close to where we needed to be, uh, and I, I think we could agree to some kind of planting plan within that 40 feet, if that would be acceptable.
And, and so I, I think, I think planting is certainly important, uh, in the sense that I, again, just given the fact that. It looks, you know, very different from residential to have these, these large buildings, to have these large parking lots. I think, I think screening plants really all around, even the, the front, the side and the back are important. And I still get, I, 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 I completely, you know, again, you've made, you've made great progress, so I do sincerely believe you looked closely at 60. And certainly believe that that would work. I, I guess in addition to the screening, the, the screenings though, that's where. Where I'd want to see on how we can make, i- if, if it's possible, if you feel it, it could work with 50 on, on the sides and back. Uh, you know, just maybe as a, as a kind of an, an in between, you know, just given that, that extra space between where it gets very residential. Compared to, uh, just where we, you know, look at potentially changing to civic.
I mean, that's just a hard question for me to answer because I'm not an engineer, uh, I mean, you, you know, the one thing I know is when you start playing with engineered plans, it's like a puzzle, right? And it all fits together, the parking is where it is for a reason and the buildings are situated where they are for a reason. You know, I, I, I think one way to cut through this might be to, you know, agree. Or put a condition in that we say that, you know. The buffer as it exists will be supplemented, subject to, you know, final approval by community development or some other entity. I, I, I know we can get to the screening you're interested in and, and I, I know why you're interested in it, there, we've got 40 feet to play with. Um, I think that we could do something pretty significant there that would make it seem very distant. But again, I don't have the plan in front of me tonight, but I know that the community development department would be qualified to, you know, review and approve something like that. And if the mayor and council want to see it again, I think that might be agreeable as well.
May I speak? Um, of, the, the buffer is required to be planted, it's in article 10 of the code. So all new developments, all new projects, um, a 40 foot buffer would be required to have a double row of evergreen trees. And it, so it, when it goes to the design review board. It would have to show a double row of evergreen trees along, in the entire buffer, along the side and the rear. So that is a requirement, um, that's currently in the code and section 10.2.4 under the buffer section. So they might not have it on their site plan right now, but. Should this be rezoned and approved when they make it to the design review board? That's what they'd have to show on their landscaping plan when it, when it goes to the, um, that board. Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, uh, so, and Mr. Webb, so I was, and, and I'm aware of that, that's where I guess, and I should have been a little more clear and I apologize. And that, that's where, again, my, my thought process was and, and why I was bringing it up is. I have concerns with the intensity, the, the size, et cetera. And so what I was bringing up was the potential, knowing that, that you've said and it completely makes sense that you can't go to the, the 60. To see if it is possible to go to a 50, knowing that when you combine our, our, our planting requirements. That I feel that, that gives me a little more comfort, so that, that was kind of, I guess, the, 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 the extra part from what you've done is. Is the seeing if it's possible to go on the side and back to 50. And then also the, the front doesn't require the screening plantings. But again, just given that it's such a residential area, residential road, and you have a large parking lot, big buildings of just. Of the possibility of adding the, the plantings in the front as well.
I, 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 I think I can say that we would be agreeable to adding plantings in the front. Yeah, I, I honestly can't answer the question about increasing the buffer, I just know I told them do the best you can. And they came back at 40, so. Right here, I can't answer that question. Um. Other than what I've already been told, but yeah. I, I think we would absolutely add some landscape screening in the front if that was something that was important.
Additional questions from council for the applicant? We don't have anyone from the public that wishes to speak, uh, council member Palermo.
Hey, thank you Mayor Henry, so, um, I, I brought up my, my two concerns so far, which is the. Uh, and, and again, mentioning the, uh, regarding the, the buffers as being a way I think could, could resolve my concerns on just the, the intensity compared to the area. Talked about the plantings in the front, which actually for that item, you said you feel confident could be accomplished. The other area of concern is, so I appreciate you adding some additional prohibited uses, I, I think that, that certainly would be important. There's two more. That I wanted to raise and see if you had any, any concerns with, so basically, based on your item number three summary of uses and then what you've said tonight. You feel really just the primary. School, um, you know, classrooms, facilities, et cetera. So therefore, uh, two uses that are potentially available within, um, civic. One is telecommunications towers. And that, that's one that I would certainly want to see prohibited, uh, unless you were to come forward to council and, and request a, a change. But, but again, based on what you said, I think, I think it would make sense where that was not included. And the other one is adult, uh, there's an adult care center that's, that's permitted. And, and requesting that be moved from, uh, permitted to conditional and see if, if that gave you any, any concerns based on. On what you stated for the uses.
Uh, no, it doesn't, so we, we could, so you're talking about prohibiting telecommunications towers and making adult care center of, uh, CUP basically.
That's right.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, we, I think we agree to that.
Additional comments, questions from council? Yes, council member Judy.
Real quick on the screening in the front, um, this is probably for Jackie. Um. Would DRB give the guidance there, um, or would you all give the guidance there to make sure it was adequately, adequately. It's too late, uh, screened, um, for the neighborhood, um. Cause you know, that's going to be important, uh, the look and feel from the street, um, of this buildings, you know. Obviously, the building's a church, so it's going to look like the other church buildings there. Um, the Coptic Church has a, has a rather, um. Unique look to it and its architecture, so I, I assume the buildings will look somewhat similar. Um, so I think the screening from the street, uh, will be, uh, will be key. Um, so just wanted to get that, that question answered.
Yes, so our design review board will be the ones to, uh, approve that portion, but our city arborist and our landscape architect will also review. We have, um, three different types of landscape strips in our code. Um, one is with shrubs, one is with a screening wall and one is with a berm. But they do have some options, um, that they can use in the code, um, but it also, like I said, be reviewed. By the arborist, landscape architect and the design review board. When they do make it to that, um, portion or to that board. If approved for rezoning.
Thank you.
Council member Hall.
Thank you Mayor Henry, uh, Jackie, this question I think is for you as well. Would the, how would they, um. Could they do the landscaping that it, it's contiguous or consistent with what they have on their other properties? So it looks like it's all belongs to one property. The way the UDC is, you said a berm and, and a couple of other things, and I don't know that the existing has. Landscaping is defined by the UDC.
Um, that is correct, um, those, um, both of those products, um, properties were built prior to the UDC. Um, so, but yes, our design review board takes a look at that, they actually look at the, they talk about the adjacencies all the time. Um, so they would probably want to see something similar to what the, um, assembly hall and the church actually have today. Um, and probably try to be as continuous as they can.
Thank you.
Council member Willsey.
Yes, and thank you Mayor and Jackie also for you, and this is just a, really a confirmation and question too, just to. Make sure that, um, design review, review board were looking at the architectural details and, and other things that can do to blend in with the area. Um, I like the way these buildings are, at least one of the buildings is designed, it looks like around a courtyard with some. Open space on either side that, that kind of helps, you know, I think break up the size and scale of the building. Um, so just, just wanted to confirm that too and to what extents and what depth. The design review board will go with those details, those building details.
Well, they take a look at the design guidelines, they look at what's around the area. Um, so what, when the applicant submits, uh, the drawings, it's reviewed to make sure, one. Um, how compatible is it with the area and how, um, does it come back, is it compatible with the design guidelines? For that character area of the city and the sections that it has to meet, so they will look at all that. Um, and we as staff can also give suggestions to the applicant. Um, and say, um, how does it, how, how does it flow with what's in the area? How does it flow with the buildings that are existing for St. Mary's already?
And, and also during the design review board process is a time that the community can come and offer suggestions and ask questions as well, correct?
Yes, it's a public meeting.
Right, okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Additional, yes, council member Palermo.
Thank you Mayor Henry, so, um, a- again, Ms. Mr. Webb, you know, you've, you've, you've brought so much progress ahead of time to make this a much, much easier discussion. And then as, as I've raised my different, different issues, sounds like planting in the front, that's, that's resolved. Um, those additional pro, uh, prohibited or conditional items, that's resolved. So for me, it just, it just still comes down to buffer being really that only remaining item where I'm just afraid of it, just still. Be looking too close, feeling too close, changing the character. Uh, question I guess before I have for you is a question for Ms. Dible. So, uh, this, the current setback, uh, proposed in the drawing, it looks like it's straight across, so I heard it's 90 to 100 feet. First I was thinking maybe parts it's 90 feet, parts it's 100 feet, but as I look at the picture. I'm guessing it's probably just a constant that's, that's just somewhere in between, do you, do you know, do you know specifically? Um, if, if either of you, Mr. Webb or, or Ms. Dible know. E- exactly what, what those setbacks are.
Uh, I actually spoke with the engineer earlier today and he told me that the buildings are 100 feet, 105 feet back from the road.
Okay, so they are.
Right away, I'm sorry, from the right away, so probably a little bit more than 105, but, um, but it's from the right away, 105 feet.
Okay.
Sorry, if I could add to that, uh, it, it's not a solid wall across the front either, uh, I don't know if Jackie can pull the site plan back up, but. The, the building to the east, which is closest to the activity center is staggered. Uh, and the building that is furthest west actually sort of has a U shape. Where it fronts the road, so it's not a monolith. There.
Oh, I see.
And again, that was sort of done to try and.
Yes, kind of.
Impact massing and scale, I, I, I'll tell you the most confusing thing about the site plan is the, the rectangles these, these buildings are in. It makes it look like that is the building, but it's not, and, and if this were a colored plan, the area in the middle of the U would be green, right? And, 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 uh, there, there's. I- i- it's just confusing, it took me a while to realize that as well, so it's the, basically the, the sort of crosshatched areas that are actually the buildings themselves.
That's helpful, thank you. So therefore my follow-up question, Ms. Dible, was. Uh, so you mentioned, you spoke with the engineer and you mentioned 105 feet from the, from the right of way. I just want to make sure that, that I'm thinking and this, we, you and I spent a lot of time together as we looked at setbacks from the historic district. Would you consider that, or, or would, would you and I consider that 105 foot setback if we were to define that for this proposed building?
Yes, because it is a good distance back from the road and normally, um, technically on this property, I think they're only required to have a 50 or 60. So they're further back than, um, what, uh, their setback would normally be. Um, and I think they're doing that in order to kind of line up with their existing buildings. And also to be setback to kind of mirror the houses that are also in the area.
So you, you went exactly where my next question was going. So if this one's about 105 feet, uh, approximately. If we look towards their existing building and then separately, we look at the, the homes on the other side, which is the more residential area. How do we know how far back those?
Sure. Hold on a second. Let me, um, move down here. Okay, so, um. The existing building, which is over here a little bit off, is right around, um, I believe it's at 195 feet, I didn't get this one measured, however. If you look at the houses that are across the street, um, as you can see, they, these look like they go to the center line of the road. So, um, this one looks like it's 125, 134, 137, 119, 121. This one over here, these two are on the, um, same side of the street as St. Mary's. 146 and 132, but they're coming from the center line, so they're probably closer to about, maybe about 120. Um, 110 to 120, so they're probably going to be right in line with where the new buildings will be going.
The proposed buildings, just to clarify that, that are proposed by the church, would be about 135 feet from the center line.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dible, I, I appreciate that. Um. Yeah, so, so I still, I still just come back to, to my, my hesitation is those. Given it is still a much more intense use with the parking lots and, and the buildings. Is, is really more on that side buffer and, and the, the back buffer. And just, just seeing the opportunity to try to push that out and, and maybe have the opportunity to, to change. In the, in the future, you know, through an official, official process, but that's, that's where I am tonight. The reason I was asking about the front is because I think what you proposed does seem good, I was wondering if there's any wiggle room. I, even in the opposite direction to give, to give some more latitude to, uh, to your developer, to you, to the applicant. But, uh, but ultimately, just trying to look for, for a way to, uh, just ensure that there are the proper buffers from where it gets so residential.
Council member Judy.
So I guess this question's to councilman Palermo and, and Mr. Webb. Um, again, thank you so much for staying up with us till 1 AM. Um, kind of crazy, uh, anyway, uh. If we were able to just say, hey, tonight, we're going to do 50. Um, and we're going to condition it that way, they just got to figure out, would, uh, councilman Palermo be all right with that? And would Mr. Webb just say, that's better than nothing, um, because, you know, obviously I'd like for us to not make them come back for the 30th time. Um, because they have been, uh, down this road, if, if we're going to approve this and, and work through it, let's, let's try to work through it tonight and put it all on the table.
Council members of power.
Thank you Mayor, so I would like to go back for a minute to the driveway. That we, that was brought up by council member Hall. Is this something that will, I mean, what is the purpose of having double driveway? I don't know, if you can answer or transportation department can answer the question. What would be the purpose to have two driveways and the, the pro and cons of the two driver, driveways?
Well, I, I can give you my, uh. Layman's opinion, I mean, number one, you know, one of the primary factors is to clear the site. You know, after a service or a larger event, having two access points. Uh, allows the property to clear quicker, which I think is better for the neighborhood and also allows folks to get onto the property without impeding flow of traffic. Uh, on Hembree Road, so that's number one, I, I think on a property this size, it, it looks small on the site plan, it's actually four acres. These driveways are separated 300 feet apart, I think that's pretty standard engineering as well from a, a traffic standpoint. Uh, so given the trips generated, I think that. Your thought was this would be a better way to minimize, mitigate the impact. Uh, you know, for the area in which this property is located, but I'll let Mr. Del Ross provide the, uh, expert analysis there.
I don't have much more to add, I'll just say that, uh, every, again, every single site plan I've ever seen for this development, all the way back to February or March. At our first meeting has had those two driveways, so they haven't been changed. Uh, from a transportation's perspective, we're always going to be fighting for multiple access points. But for this specific property, due to code requirements. But for this specific property, due to code requirements, the second driveway is not required. Their traffic study that they did submit was based on trips being distributed across those two driveways. So if we wanted to start talking about removing those, one of those driveways, then we. Logically would want to make sure that by reducing that one driveway, we would, we would want. From transportation's perspective, we would want to talk about a revision to the traffic study. I hope we don't go there. Again, from our department's perspective, uh, we would support that second driveway, just like we would always support, uh, additional access points.
And, and my client texted me and said that the driveway was an issue that came up from the fire department as well. I don't. That's about all it says, but.
But do you think this can alleviate the traffic on Hembry Road on a, you know, having two entrances or exits? Will alleviate the traffic on Hembry Road the day that they have a service or they have activities there?
Absolutely. Yes. I'm sorry, that made nothing for me.
For both.
Councilmembers Zapata, I don't think, um, based on the submitted traffic study by the applicant with, with two driveways. There is no significant impact on traffic on Hembry Road. Uh, if we were to reduce the amount of driveways, I would recommend we run the analysis again. But if my gut instinct is, uh, this specific development was barely over the threshold that required the traffic study. And I wouldn't expect an impact if we went to one, but I would want them to revise the traffic study if we talked about changing an access that way.
May I speak?
Thank you.
Additional comments? Oh, yes, Jackie.
Yes, um, the two access points, uh, is because of fire, they required it. So their comments in the staff reports that two separate remote approved fire apparatus access roads shall be provided. So that is why they have two, um, access points on their, on their plans.
Great. Thank you for the clarification.
Additional comments? Yes, Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Uh, back to Councilman Judy's, uh, question. Yeah, I, I'd say where, where I am at the moment, knowing it's, it's late, et cetera. And, and just knowing the, the history, knowing that originally when the applicant first came forward, really a big part of the discussion was. The, uh, just they're, they're interested in getting it rezoned for, for financing and, and other aspects. And, and I want to see this get built and be successful and, and hope they have a great youth, youth program among, among just other things with their, with their services. That, that all being said, where, where I am tonight is I'd certainly support, support this with fifty-foot buffers. I feel that, that resolves really my concerns. As I, as I look at the plan, now that I understand it's not the full rectangle, that it is the, the buildings within the rectangle. It seems to me like there, there could be opportunities for the, the footprints to be slightly adjusted where, where, where something, something could work. And, and, um, and, and that's, that's where, where I certainly offer flexibility. And, and Mr. Web, based on what your preference is, if your, if your, your preference would be deferred, again, I'm certainly supportive of that. To give your engineers a, a chance to make sure that, that, that it all works really well for them. If, if the preference is, uh, to really go for that approval tonight, just know that there is the opportunity. Uh, this, it's rezoned as civic. This is a plan that you have that you can build. And there's always the opportunity to request changes through a, uh, through a council process in the future. But that's, that's kind of my initial reactions, knowing that it's, it's late.
Let, let me ask you. So are you talking about a, a fifty-foot buffer on the west side or somewhere else?
So I'm, I'm, I'm talking about fifty-foot buffers in two location. And, and I, I, I'm looking, I'm looking at the drawing that has Hem, Hembry at the top, which actually I guess is, is the north. So, so yes, I'm referring to the west as well. So the west and the, and the south.
You know, I, I, I just don't know how to answer that question because I, I didn't engineer the site plan. I, I'll, I'll tell you a, a consequence of that change though. If, if you actually look at the site plan, they're only showing a single row of cars and, and a, a driveline or in the back. So, you know, to have parking there, you gotta have at least one driveway. I, I guess my concern would be that I, I personally believe that the massing and scale on this is, is pretty appropriate for a residential area. Which you're, all you're gonna do is wind up compressing, you know, that U-shaped building, for example, building two into something a little bit more monolithic. And probably a little bit, you know, broader across the front. I, it, 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 from my perspective, you know, that is an issue. I don't know. Let me see if I can get a, you know, Lord knows, I, I'd like to wrap this up tonight. But I also don't want to put them in a box where we've agreed on an engineering solution that doesn't work. You know, that's, that's my concern. I, you know, I, I want to see resolution, but at the same time, it's just hard. This at one AM on a Zoom call. We put a bunch of non-engineers, so, um. I don't know. Let me, let me see if I get any feedback here.
Councilmembers Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Web, will you find the answer there? I would like to, uh, get the feedback from council members. So in terms of uses, uh, I understand a telecommunications tower. Uh, what is the, you know, do you want to make it a conditional or something? Or just not permitted? Then adult care center, more than four aging adults, also not permitted. And college, university. So all those three, you will be supporting and not permitted? Okay. And then. Will be the. So we are stuck, I guess, on the, the buffer situation. We're between forty and fifty.
Councilmember Palermo.
As, as, as I said, so, uh, and again, Mr. Web, you've, you've been nothing but, uh, extremely reasonable and, and productive and all that. And I, and I appreciate that. And I certainly understand the concern that I, one of the things that I think does. You know, make it, make it more, more attractive to me and the, the possibility where I see it. Uh, when I say attractive, meaning the compatibility aspect, um, is the way there's that U-shaped setup, et cetera. Uh, and that's, that's something I, I would not want to see lost. However, the, the, the advantage that I see is the way it is, it's not a U, but actually more of a Y. And I think with that Y, I completely understand your, your point you bring up. There needs to be room for that, for that lane. There needs to be room for those single spots. But that Y, I think potentially has the opportunity where it is, it is kind of fattened out a little bit. That does make it more like a U, which would have no impact to the view from Hembry, but also give a lot more room for, uh, for, for, for both the back and side buffer.
You know, I'm not getting any. Clarification on this. I, I'm just reliable. I've been doing this a long time and I just know how these are puzzle pieces that fit. You know, I, what we just, I did ask them to look at sixty. That's where we started. And we fell back on the, the forty because for some reason, I, I don't really understand why the code allows you to choose between twenty or forty. And we thought we're doing the right thing by going at least with the largest one, but I, I, I don't know whether the Y can be fattened out. I just don't know. And I don't know how it all fits together. If we do that, how does that impact parking on the west? You know, do we fall below our parking threshold? It's just a, a puzzle and I would hate to mess this up. Particularly now, you know, one AM on a Monday night.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um. I see between forty and fifty and my math gave me forty-five is in the middle. Is there something that minimum forty-five you might be able to support, Councilmember Palermo? And then on term of the setback, I, I have information of a hundred and thirty-five feet from the center lane. There is something that we, you know, is in agreement, the setback a hundred and thirty-five from center lane for minimum of forty-five. On the west and the south in term of buffers. And then not permitted uses of telecommunications tower, adult care center, more than four aging adults, college and university. Would like to know if I summarize, uh, something that you might be able to support.
Councilmember Wilson, did you have your hand up?
Uh, you know, I did. It was just a comment. I would just really hate to see that building, that Y building flattened out. Because I think doing that would completely change the scale, the appearance of the scale of it from the street. Um, and it would also change the feel of the building from the inside. I think we saw kind of what happened with playing with building design, um, uh, once before in another project on Highway nine. So that's something I would not want to be tweaking with, um, you know, here tonight. I wonder if, if there's any give and take on the actual street width and pavement width that's there to help give us the extra. Five feet. And then also along the back corner on the, uh, the lower right-hand side, it looks like there's way over forty feet. Is that correct when you take into account the open space and the, uh, underground retention? So that area is taken care of.
That is correct.
Right. It's true. I, 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 I got an okay on the forty-five as long as we can move the puzzle pieces around a little bit within the rectangle. So if that helps us, uh, at least have that going for me.
Councilmember Judy.
Jackie, I just want to make sure on those numbers, uh, was it one thirty-five from the center lanes? I, I heard, I never heard that number. I, I'm fine with that. That was, was, I know it was one oh five from the right away. Who was one thirty-five?
The one thirty-five was from the center line.
Okay, great. So I'm good with that. I'm good with the forty-five as well.
And the forty-five would be on the west and the south sides, correct?
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you. Um, so with that, ob, obviously I'm, I'm here advocating for fifty and, and that's my preference. I think forty-five is something I, I'd consider. Knowing that the forty-five buffer is something that has to be planted under the code, so irrelevant of what, what we say. So that's, that's the south side and the west side. And then as for the, given the latitude of adjusting those, those rectangles, what I'd, what I'd say is. The appearance from Hembry Road, from that main road is important to me. So I think it is important that it doesn't just turn into a, a, a monolithic rectangle in the sense that there still is. That gap that we see at the, the top of the, the Y. But I think there, there could and there should be a latitude on the backside, which is what I mentioned, where potentially the Y turns into a U or something along, something along those lines. But I do think in the front, it's absolutely crucial that there still is that, that appearance, because it does make it look smaller and more, more compatible. So those, those are my, those are my viewpoints and responses there. Something that I think I heard Councilman Zapata might have left out was that. In addition to the screened plantings on the south and the west. Borders needing to be approved by DRB, that the screening plants. Uh, on the, on the north side, so on the Hembry roadside, would have to be approved by the DRB as well. Um, and so that's, that's something else that kind of comes to mind for me.
Little comments from council. Councilmembers Zapata, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I think that I, I put all the pieces of the puzzle together. So I will motion to approve, uh, but. Okay, so I, I, I imagine that all my fellow councilmen agree with the staff conditions. All four staff conditions, right? That is not a, an issue. Okay, so motion to approve with all four staff conditions. Then, uh, in term of the setback, a hundred and thirty-five from center lane or a hundred and five. From the. From the. What was?
Right way.
Right way.
Hundred and five from right way or a hundred and thirty-five from center lane? In terms of setback, buffers, forty-five on the west side and forty-five on the south sides. Then, uh, planting on, on the front and approved by the DRB. And we talked that it's part of the code, the double row evergreen trees is part of, is required already by code. Then we have the uses not per, not permitted. Telecommunication tower, adult care center, more than four aging adults, college, university. And I think that. I believe I got it all for my motion.
We've got a motion by Councilmembers Zapata. Do we have a second? Councilmember Palermo clarifying question?
Yes, uh, so multiple, so, uh, one of them is in addition to staff's. Uh, required conditions, in addition to the required conditions that Councilman Zapata said. I'd like to see the applicant proposed conditions to be included as well. And that was in, in email from Mr. Web. So it mentions, um. It, it mentions number one, which is basically a typical one, which is in, uh. The owner developer shall develop the property in substantial accordance with the site plan received November eighteenth, twenty twenty. The square footages are not guaranteed as reduction may be required due to staff comments during the development process, as well as additional conditions from council. Item number two. Oh, actually, I guess most of these seem like they have been including staffs. It seemed to me number three and four. Ms. Dible, am I, am I right? Uh, is one and two, were those ones that staff had already included, but three through six, are those, uh, others new from the applicant?
You are correct. One and two were the, were the staff. Um, and then three through six were the applicant's proposed conditions. Staff added a couple, but if you just say the conditions proposed by the applicant, we will add it all in.
Okay. So in that case, uh, I'd, I'd want to see that in addition to those, in addition to all the staff approved conditions. It is also all the applicant proposed conditions with the addition of all the conditions from Councilman Zapata. Uh, which, which involved those screening plants in the front of the property, in addition to the required ones in the buffers. And, and then I guess just, uh, an additional one, and, and it's where I have the concern of not wanting to, to. Turn this into monolithic is I think it's an important, and this could be, this could be something worked out with the DRB and approved by the DRB. But just the, the current visual from the front of the road, that is remaining the same. And, and what I'm pointing out is on the left, we have that Y and, or let's just talk about the top of the U. So the fact that it makes it look less incompatible to, uh, Hembry Road. And then in addition, on the property next to that, instead of it being one giant rectangle that you can see from Hembry. It has half of it is setback further, making it look as if it's two smaller buildings. So that's, those are, those are visuals that I'd want to see maintained. So I wouldn't want to give a hundred percent latitude in changing the buildings. Mr. Web, does that, does that make sense?
It does. Yes, sir.
And did that give you any concerns?
I'm not, I'm not seeing anything. I got an okay on the change in uses. Obviously, we're okay with our own conditions. I, I think there's latitude here for staggering the frontages in the way you mentioned. I guess the only question I had was the double row of evergreens. Is that on the front too? I know that, that is in the buffer on the south and west. I know you want vegetation in the front, but I think a double row of evergreens might not be what you had in mind, but.
I, I mean, I, I think, I think screening, screening vegetation to be approved by the DRB.
All right. I think that's acceptable.
Councilmember Zapata, would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, I would like to add what Councilmember Palermo. Discuss, which is all conditions proposed by the applicant. And the screening planting on the front, uh, approved by the DRB. And, and respect the, the front of the building, uh, as presented.
Okay, we've got, we've got a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Judy. All those in favor, please raise your hands. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for staying up late with us.
Yeah, I left Roswell one time at two AM, so I'm doing better tonight than I've I've done in the past.
Awesome. Thanks. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a city attorney's report. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, Mayor. The first time I have is approval to amend Article Three Alcohol Beverages of the City of Roswell Code Ordinances. Now, new section three point seven point two one, home delivery of alcohol by authorized packaged goods retailers. And this will be the second reading of your bill. Uh this is an ordinance to amend Article Three Alcohol Beverages of the City of Roswell Code Ordinances to add a new section, Article three point seven point two one, home delivery of alcohol by authorized packaged goods retailers. Now, therefore, the mayor and council ordain as follows, text of which is incorporated herein by reference, and it will prove this will be the second reading.
Did I just wake you up?
You said my name?
Yeah.
Oh, it glitched. I could, I didn't hear you say my name. I was like, why, why is everybody looking at me?
Might have caught you napping.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve by Councilmember Judy. I see two seconds. Councilmember Palermo, Councilmember Tizer, all those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously.
I don't have a recommendation for closure.
Uh yeah, he doesn't have a recommendation for closure. Um and I am going along with that, but I would please ask you all to be very well-prepared for our next closure meeting, and I think you all know why. We've got some business to take care of. So um and I'm available by phone if anybody uh wants to talk confidentially prior to that. So you all have a great evening, and we are adjourned.